Dr. Luna Nahedda, is that you?
Yes.
Dr. Luna Nahedda, is that you?
Yes.
Okay. Start, let me just...
Thank you.
I hereby start the special study session. We have DLR with us, we have our GC awarded Barry Chase and team. And should we do roll call or do we need to do... okay, roll call please.
Dr. Luna Nahedda?
Here.
Mr. Del Palacio? Mr. Ortega Romero? Mr. Chapman? And Ms. Sun?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Member Chapman will be doing the land acknowledgement.
Besting, no, there we go. The Tolleson Union High School District serves 14,000 students with 15 indigenous communities represented throughout our seven high schools, soon to be eight. The Tolleson Union High School District Governing Board would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Acomola Odom and Peeposh peoples, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We recognize their enduring connection to this land, their rich culture and language, and the individual contributions they have made and continue to make in our community. As we gather today for the Tolleson Union High School District Governing Board meeting, let us remember the significance of these lands and honor the legacy of the original stewards of this territory.
Thank you, Member Chapman. And now we will go to our item of the evening with school number eight. Gaius.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, we have our DLR Chase team here present. I believe Carmen will lead the festivities, so I'll turn it over to you and let's see your show and tell items.
You can bring toys to a governing board meeting. So I'll just kick us off, this was a really cool photo taken from your high school eight of PIR, so you really can see it even with an iPhone photo. That's kind of fun. So we do have a big audience here, many of which are on your team. This is our combined design team. We have brought on Root Architects, they have partnered with us in Texas on a few different projects and have been instrumental in our early design concepts, working hand in hand with Jason and our whole team. So it's been a really cool collaboration, can't wait to add the 29 photos of Chase up there because they will be working with us as well. I bring up the big team in part because over the next nine months or so, we're going to be spending about $100,000 a week in all the engineering, architecture, all those sorts of things, because this is a really awesome big project. So part of what I'm going to talk through is kind of our schedule a little bit, very high level, and the sort of important feedback we need from you. So this is the high level schedule, right now we're at the end of visioning, master planning, the beginning of schematic design. And so we have already come to you for your big goals, if you remember the last workshop. And today we're coming to you with some design concepts and site design. That gets us through the first 90 days. Now to keep us on track to open in 2027 for freshmen and sophomores, we're going to move into schematic design this summer. And we'll come back to you for a couple workshops or feedbacks on sustainability in particular, and your goals around that, and floor plan feedback. And in design development, that's when we dive in really deeply with more and more teachers, particularly like the art teacher, the science teacher, getting really deep into the rooms. And at that point, we'll bring to you finishes, so that's all the colors, materials, the stone, the timber that you've mentioned, things like that that you can touch and feel. In construction documents, which will be over the winter, that's when we bring back to you and Chase brings back to you the GMPs, that's a guaranteed maximum price, that's a contract you do with Chase. And then during construction administration, you get all the fun stuff of ground breakings, ribbon cuttings, beam signings, community tours, those sorts of things. So those are the items that we'll be bringing to you in workshops as we go all the way through. Any questions about the general layout?
No, I do have a question for our CFO, Ken. Doesn't look exciting, don't you want to stick around for this? You didn't answer my question.
We tried to. So I'd like to point out, and we'll come back to today's goal a couple times, but what we really would like is feedback from you on which architectural scheme, so the architectural overall idea, and which site, out of the two sites in front of you, really reflect the values of our community and support our students. So that's the question we'll keep coming back to. But first I'm going to turn it over to Bryra and Tim. I know in our last board meeting, we heard a lot from teachers about listening to them, listening to students, and Bryra and Tim have done just that.
Awesome, thank you so much, Carmen. That being said, I'm going to go ahead and just do a really quick recap of all that we've done with you all. So as Carmen alluded to, so when we started this project, we started with a visioning session in this room, and we asked you, what is an ideal high school for Tolleson? And so we sat together and we described a couple of roles, or you know, what we wanted to see themes, and so we wrote them down, and so as always, we keep this at the forefront of our design. So that way, when we're making design decisions, we come back and we ask ourselves, does this still support the values, the goals that we aligned with you all that day? Right, so this is just a reminder of that. Tim here will talk about the educators.
Yes, we had an opportunity to meet with a group of administrators and staff members as we think about what could be in a new space. And we started this session just by, as you see, they're asking them two words that they would hope would resonate with them in this project. So you think things from empowered learning environments, to the social, physical, and the overall wellbeing of staff and students was a theme that resonated. And then just the overall safety and security of students, of the community, and then how spaces can be flexible and sustainable as pedagogy and teaching and learning changes over the years. How can we grow into that with high expectations and high outcomes? And we also did an activity that we looked at the day in the life of a student on a typical Wednesday, for example, and what they might experience currently. But then if we were to take away all the barriers and challenges, what might that be in the future? And what really resonated with this group was the thought of, how do we move away from traditional sit and get? How do we move away maybe from large group instruction, but more hands-on, passion-based, interest-based, experiencing the day through new curriculum opportunities and experiences with kids? And then we ended the day with looking at the exit ticket of, if they wanted to see a couple things in their new space, or what they don't want to see in their new space. It really what resonated in this, everything from very functional to innovative, things like natural light to green space were things they would love to see in this new space. But then innovation and new opportunities and experiences, and those things that also could benefit the staff and their day-to-day workload.
Thanks, Tim. So we engaged with you all, we engaged with your staff, and we also engaged with your students. So we did a two-part activity with a group of La Jolla and West Point students. So the first one that we did was the photo voice, and then the second one was them actually putting together a collage. So we asked one of the teachers to actually introduce the assignment, and the assignment was that students would take photos, eight to 10 photos, of where they felt in their campus they belonged and they didn't belong. And after that, myself and another colleague, we came and we worked with them through a mural board, through just having peer communication with them, and just kind of got a sense of like, why do they feel this way in their school? And then after that, we created a collage for it. So here is a couple of the photos from the students at West Point and La Jolla. And when we talk about belonging, we really wanted the students to just take photos around their campus where they just felt like this was them, this was their space. So here are just a couple of quotes that we got from the students. A lot of them really loved just that courtyard space, they love the ability to just be able to have that spirit, that school sort of representation. You know, they love definitely just being with their teammates and their peers and just hanging out. And they also particularly really like their library space. When we asked them, where is it a space that they feel like they don't belong, many of the students kind of pointed to just hidden corners, awkward sort of like scary sort of spaces. There's a comment in there about a student just in a particular classroom where the technology is a problem with them, the restrooms that they don't actually have mirrors, they're not sort of like friendly. There's talking here about just a lack of wayfinding, there's traffic in the stair, and so we just captured a little bit of their feedback there that you can read. So once we did this, and we talked to them about why they felt this way, we asked them to then put together a collage. So this represents a collage from both West Point and La Jolla students. And it's kind of tricky because in reality, we gave them magazines that are all architectural, like magazines, and we asked them, like, in your ideal classroom space, pick photos that you relate to that you would like to see. And so you'll see, a lot of the students sort of gravitated towards like, homey feeling, more neutral colors, they expressed that they wanted, you know, CTE, they liked the flexible classroom and furniture and sort of that nature. So all of that being said, after we did these activities, we found four major themes, and these are two of them here. So the first one is physical comfort and balanced aesthetics. So when we talk about physical comfort, we're talking really about just furniture that is accessible, right, that has the idea of being able to just be flexible in the space. Balanced aesthetics, they most definitely gravitated towards the modern look and wood finishes, so big windows. And when we talk about bold color, in the sense of where we can keep most things, you know, neutral, and then bring back color as a form of school spirit and school representation. The other two themes that we saw was just a large connection to nature and then emotions evoked by design. When we talk about connection to nature, a lot of students just love the idea of having large windows, greenery, that indoor-outdoor sort of connection, the natural light is really important to them. And when we talk about emotions, a lot of the collages and what we saw in the representation really talked about this homey, more cozy and organized feel. So that was the student, and then we put together a community survey, and so the community survey, actually, we had 225 responses. And those responses were teachers, staff, the community themselves. And so with that, we got, it actually helped really reemphasize what the students were already talking about. When we did this survey, it was two parts. The first part was a more qualitative, we asked them a couple of questions, like, hey, what would you actually like to see in your high school? Tell us about your community, what makes it so special? And so here you'll see a couple of their quotes kind of written there. And so they really want a place that where a community thrives, and they want this sort of like strength and diversity, a representation of their overall community. That was the first part. The second part of the survey asked the folks to select from a series of images. And these images, they were talking about accessible spaces, they were talking about innovative spaces, they're talking about collaboration and classroom design. So these photos here were just some of the pictures that most of the community members gravitated towards. And that being said, again, it just kind of reemphasized what we had originally seen. So there's this idea of the biophilic views, the importance of having these shaded walkways, these indoors and outdoors, large windows, we've got natural light, great outdoor features, and then again, that nice, warm sort of natural interior space. Those are some of their responses as well to that. That being said, again, as a good reminder of why we are here today, is to really talk about the concepts, and I can hand it over to Jason and Chris and the team, who will introduce us to what we've been working on all this time.
Hello. So Chris and I are going to tag-team the concepts. Our strategy for this, we've brought some models, which you see in front of you, and two different site options. We'll talk about the site at a high level, and then we've got three different distinct building options that we're going to be allowed to place on-site and kind of see how they fit. We're going to go through the characteristics of each one of them, what identifying features exist for each one of the options. We're going to do them one at a time. So our goal is to break the remaining time that we have into three sections, and we'll go one at a time, concept by concept, and receive your feedback and insights on anything that we present. And then at the end, once you've been able to see all three options and the two sites, we'll have a deeper conversation about all of them together. Makes sense? Excellent. So just a reminder of kind of where we are, and Carmen did a great job of explaining the timeline. We're in the airplane, and we're up about 30,000 feet, really looking down at a high level. So what you won't see today is necessarily a lot of detail around all of the features and components of the school, but you'll see broad strokes of what the concept can be and a characterization of each one, what they're going to feel like overall on campus. So one concept overall with three ideas, and you'll see on screen a number of images that were inspirational to the team, going all the way back to the conversation just a few moments ago about your feedback in the last work session. Thinking about all of those attributes, we're really converging three things, the land, the people, and the technology. And so our concept statement reads and talks about an homage to all three of those things, and making sure this convergence is represented through the architecture, as well as the feeling of campus, the experiential quality of campus. Want to talk about this, Chris?
Thanks, Jason. So as Jason had mentioned, I think we looked at the site and the character of the site, context being that it is a convergence of historic patterns, historic flows of the river, and that the geology, so really looking at the past and the way that geology shapes the overall site and the opportunities. Not just from the standpoint of views, but the overall architecture and how it may take cues from the past, as well as the future. We're also located near the Phoenix Raceway, which, you know, primes this conversation for technology, for CTE approaches, and how certain architectural opportunities based on vectors, based on flow lines come into play. So what you're going to see today is three distinct but very common approaches to architectural form. It's not a take it or leave it option that necessarily presents itself as what the school may look like, but we're really open to your feedback on certain qualities of each, as well as the interplay of the forms and the concepts with the two site options. So two site options and three massing opportunities, and I think from there, we'll go ahead and start with the sites.
So just as a high level for the sites, we have two in front of you. You all would be site plan south, so basically the Estrella Mountains. Chris and I are site plan north, so our residential neighbors to the north would be where we're standing. Dyser Road is on your left, my right. Alamar Boulevard along the top, 128th Avenue on the east, and then we have some field space between us and the mountains beyond.
Approximately around the enclosure here, and then you're going to see certain opportunities here for entry, being for parent, being for bus, as well as for students. And then the easement zone where the overhead transmission lines are going to be on the south of the site.
Common to both schemes are distributed parking. We'll also have distributed stormwater facilities around the site as well. So those little areas are sort of implied in the spaces that you'll see between once we place the models. Generally speaking, they accommodate roughly the same programs. There is a distinction, which we'll talk about when we get into greater detail on the sites. Before we do that, though, I think we would go through each of the architectural concepts and then show you how they relate to the site plans. Our first concept, we've called the Arroyo. Just maybe you could grab the board. What we'll do for each one of these is pass around the mass, the representative mass model, which is here, and to scale, so that you all can kind of see and touch the building form, and we'll talk about each one of them. So our Arroyo scheme represents this sculpted path through the landscape with movement, connection, and transformation shaped by the rhythms of nature and the community, which I talked about that convergence. The design language really draws from the sinuous geometry, gentle bends. Shadows are really important, obviously, for student comfort during the day, so we're being very mindful of the form and how the shadows can be beneficial cast by the building and the structures on-site. But really, it's not a metaphor, it's a framework. And so it allows us to really navigate the terrain, shape curiosity, and create real connection and collaboration through site. The board that you see here is our renderings, which I'm going to go through on screen as well for our audience members. And then we have our diagrams on screen now, which depict general areas and vicinities for where we see programs in the model. But recognize that these are diagrams at this point and very conceptual in nature. So we haven't located specific facilities or a specific curriculum, but we are generally calling out areas or zones of the diagram. Some of the distinguishing features of the Arroyo scheme is a two-story design, natural materials with pops of color, as Bryra and Tim did a great job explaining some of the feedback that we received from your stakeholder groups. This was a really important facet. A single curving outdoor space designed to unite and focus the campus towards the center. Integrated performing arts, outdoor bridges, and wide circulation paths for accessibility to both levels. These are some of the hallmarks of the Arroyo. Lots of features and opportunities as the design develops, should the board elect to move forward with this option. Want to talk about some of the renders?
So I think one of the hallmarks of this option are the two center courts, but it definitely takes a curve linear approach, so this is really drawing back on the overall concepts. The material, the approach to all the materials and the options, these are placeholders, these are going to be yet to be developed, but we do see an overall architecture that uses materials that are of the landscape, so natural stones. In this case in particular, maybe we can start to go to the next slide here. We can start to see this idea of the floor plate from the outside coming inside, and this connection also between the first floor and the second floor through these connective opportunities that are, as Jason mentioned, these hallmark moments of colored stairs and really interesting colored opportunities onsite. You'll also see that the two courts breaks away from this idea of West Point, of a large, kind of a large out-of-scale court, and really breaks the human, you know, the scale down a little bit more on the human level. To that point, we'll also look to implement seating opportunities, so this is really where the landscape starts to really not be an afterthought, but really be something that is of the architecture itself and of the ground form, and relate in very integrated ways, really speaking to this notion of landscape and the desire for the students, based on the feedback, to have a true connection to nature. Overhead canopies, so this is really where architecture becomes opportunity for shading opportunities as well as circulation. So it would be indistinguishable in the sense that certain layers would create casting shadow opportunities. So it's not just trees, we're really looking at the architecture performing, and to that end, having opportunities for solar glass, and really being these monumental, you know, beautiful moments that highlight framing the landscape and the views to the mountains. So really, the architecture starts to produce these really interesting opportunities to view and see the landscape and observe all of the activity happening within the court.
Also just point out the outdoor dining in this particular image on the right side of the screen. That volume that you see where the bridge kind of comes across as a two-story dining space to allow students to circulate from both levels into the dining space, so we really see that connectivity being anywhere on campus, having quick accessibility, short transition times, really feeling united on campus. Okay, so you've all had a chance to see the mass and form and some of the implied courtyard shapes. Our bridge is kind of falling a little bit, but on our two sites, generally speaking, you can see how the architecture would fit on-site Option A, either here or here, with the main student drop-off being in the front with the Performing Arts Center. This is the two-story café that we showed in the previous rendering. Lots of activity and outdoor space surrounded by all of the learning areas, our music spaces, our art spaces facing north, so we get beautiful natural light in those spaces, but not necessarily the glare from the east-west or southern exposures. In this vicinity, we would have the ability to have more drop-off space, so our parent entry kind of comes and winds through site, and it would allow parents to drop off here. I'm going to move this to the other site and maybe ask Chris to talk about the site.
Yeah, so you'll see actually in both site plan options, we're really using the opportunity of the easement zone to be an opportunity for where students would park. And in this case, you would have a very direct access, so students would park and then flow up to the building. In this, it was similar as well, but I just wanted to point that out because that'll be a common thread through the schemes as well. But in this case, we also have opportunities for dropping off, and I think now may be a good time to talk about the stadium options, if we want to start to see how the stadium, referring to it as a stadium with the enclosed sports arena function, may start to interface as well with the architecture. So we're going to talk about two overall options for the enclosed arena. You're seeing an oval option, and then we will shortly talk about a more rectilinear option, but in this case, you can really start to see it all come together, really picking up on the flow lines of the drop-off and creating the multi-zone opportunity for parking as well, and really trying to fit everything onsite in the proper orientation. So concerning fields, concerning making sure that we, you know, just respect the overall amount of space we're going to need to queue all the vehicles for drop-off as well.
That's an overview of the Arroyo concept. We'd love to hear feedback, questions, thoughts that you all have on this first option. Yep, we'll just keep trading. So this mass here is the gym, and so we again see circulation from southern parking between the buildings, opportunity for staff parking right immediate to the facility, and then some additional parking kind of sprinkled throughout for various visitors and folks who might just come to an activity after school as well. So stadium situated on the, it would be the west side in this particular scheme, again to get as much stacking for vehicles as possible before they would enter the high school proper. So we envision staff, so our front office is here in this front piece, this low front piece here. We envision staff and visitor parking with immediate proximity to that, so they would have a very short walk. Some of our student spaces, and you might choose to say, you know, this might be upper classmen, or however you wanted to administer that, but our student spaces are kind of distributed. And then we have some visitor spots up here, whether you're coming to the stadium or coming to an event.
So a couple of things on the instructional space. One of the things, and it was highlighted in your photo voice, that students are having trouble with at West Point, is that choke point of students who are going up the stairs are clashing with students who are trying to come down the stairs. And when I look, well, yes, that's what I was going to ask about this stair path you guys have over here. Where is the offset to that, where it's, are you envisioning like some kind of like, we're putting a pole up through the middle to say like stay on the right side of the pole? Or how are you envisioning that traffic flowing? And then how does that get, when they get up to the landing, you know, that pinch point up there? How's that? How do you guys envision that working out with a bunch of students flowing through that area?
That's a wonderful question, thank you for asking. So we envision both interior and exterior circulation. And so for our exterior stairs, they're certainly wide enough where we would subdivide them. For our interior stairs, we might take the same strategy. If the stairs are on the order of 15 feet wide, we would want to separate that into multiple pieces so that students would clearly flow one way or the other.
So there's another stairwell that would be on the interior side of that? So that wouldn't be the only place where they, okay.
Absolutely. No, we're actually, we're picturing lots of vertical circulation.
Lots of internal stair, okay.
Wide circulation, you'll see, is kind of implied in some of our form work as well, so we're definitely thinking about transition times, about smooth path of travel, about easy access for students, and accessible routes.
Now, with this design, well first, overall, I like the shape of the design. I like the way it lays out, I like the way that the students can go in multiple directions and have smaller areas for lunch. But we're losing one thing that I really loved about West Point, and our principal does too, and that is to have view of the entire quad from our office with her nice one-way glass where she sees everything, all the traffic all at once. Any thoughts on, like, as we are trying to oversee lunchtime and see all of these locations and have eyes on all these students, you guys thought about like what that looks like for monitoring the space during the lunch period?
Absolutely. And that's a great question as well, and I want to point out, and maybe the model doesn't do it justice at this size, but if you were to stand in the center, either on this floor or this floor, you would be able to see full access from one position. So we want one position passive observation from any point, right? So that would be our center point. Administration can also be somewhat distributed. If you want to think about maybe some of your student services being distributed, some of those kinds of things, you might consider that as an opportunity for some additional eyes and ears, if you will, in different aspects of the concept.
Yeah, it's not like it'll be under the eyes, but the location of the visibility is not just for the principal, it's for the security, their VP, their staffs. They will have more access and more eyes, you know, on campus to monitor. I think the design at West Point is far advanced than our other campuses, but I believe this would be far more superior in terms of safety because of the access of the visibility for multi-individual. Because what we see at West Point is in the office of the principal. That's great if that's her sole job, but, you know, we don't secure a campus with just one person. But this design can have a dual function because of the linear of the space that they can expand it on two-side mirror in some ways. Because if you think about a two-way mirror, you can see that it can have a stretch. So this side will see this view and this other view. And last time we were discussing about stairs, right? When we were talking about in the circular at West Point, they were kind of divided, so it was kind of hard to go, you know, through, you know, without that division. So we talked about interior-exterior stairways to shortcut, like if it was West Point with the buildings, you know, separated. By the way, great job on the design, the implementation, the vision that we're asking. I don't want to say like I knew exactly how it was going to look like, but now that I see it, this was exactly what I was looking at. I do have a comment about the cafeteria area. I was thinking that this is where we can maximize the glass, the solar glass panels to have that angler, to make it more heightened and to even expand taller, because each floor, I want it to look like they're standing on clouds. The height, like if they're on the first floor, I want them to have that whole view of the indigenous land that we're going to respect, that nature has preserved, and offhand they can see Tres Rio, and to see the nature around them. Because when they're spending that amount of time, the maximum time during their break, during their lunch, not only are they going to get their natural sunlight dose, but they also get a chance to have a serene, non-busy, you know, visibility by looking at the nature. And possibly around that place, we can build, I mean, plant some of the indigenous Arizona cypress trees or the emery oak trees that can create deep roots that we don't have to worry about irrigation, because the land there is already lush. We don't have to worry about that stagnant, you know, you see everywhere else with the warehouses, right? So the land is already, you know, moist enough to create those, you know, mini forests, because we want to maximize the oxygen, you know, and the clean air. We already have that indigenous land, so thank you for that, you know? But we need to, you know, push it up so that we can counteract the pollution that hits in that location. Just so you know, South Mountain and Tolleson has the worst air quality in the entire state of Arizona. It's, you know, it's in our backyard, so if you can consider, if this is that view, we can maximize a little forest here, you know, and put more trees here, and it will enhance. Well, no, it's the trees, so it's going to be around it, so it's not going to like cover, because this is going to be much taller. These trees goes maximum 40 to 50 feet, I'm expecting that to be, you know, three times the height. So what they're going to see is like part of the visceral. What are you thinking, like a pose? I know, but you're not, you don't have the vision. God, thank God, he's a superintendent. Oh my God, thank God, thank God for not designing it. No, but you understand what I'm trying to say, it's like, you know, we were talking about, you know, planting more trees, and we can incorporate that, yeah.
I was going to say to the point of trees, I mean, we may use that as a natural way to screen the direct solar gain, because if we're talking about, you know, a lot of glass, so I think a mix, finding an opportunity where we can mix natural trees but keep that clear view corridor to the mountains, because if we're talking about glass, you know, being, you know, there. And I think I'll let Jason talk a little bit more about this, but as far as CTE and gardening and farm-to-table and programs that are going to involve the gardens, I think that around that proximity, it's going to be an opportunity to also supply that aspect of it too, being that food service is near here. So I think the culinary arts, you know, growing, making that a really lush corner, you know, is very opportune, and we'll definitely look at that further.
Can you guys tell us if that view will see the indigenous land, will they see that visceral? Because I know it's all here.
It's almost this.
No, I see it.
You can kind of see the mountains there, yeah, absolutely. We envision wonderful vistas to the south.
Yeah, so if we were to use that layout, unfortunately, there'd be too much in the view. They're going to see the baseball, they're going to see, you know, that'd be a distraction to the view. Here is more pure in terms of just isolating them and having that moment, you know, for them to, you know, enjoy, you know, the nature view. I think both layout is identical in terms of accessibility and parking, which is nice. I think with the stadium, if you want to do a backdoor entrance or whatnot, with this parking space and the one in the front, you know, because it can be used, you know, in both directions. But of course, talk to Derek about security and how that's going to be manifested, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I prefer this layout, but that one, it's okay.
So that's a great question, and one that we'll get into when we get further down the road, to understand exactly how those circulation paths will work. These are again, kind of big ideas, and so the form is meant to give character and quality and experience. So when we get that far, we'll spend a lot of time thinking about, okay, this path makes sense, here's why we might consider that path and get y'all's feedback.
And with the cafeteria, if you can like make it more tilted so that it's like an angle so that they get the maximum view, the height of it.
Absolutely.
Like each floor, like be like 50 feet tall each, I don't know.
Yeah, so let's talk about the two different stadium options and the roof structures. I'm just going to place this one on the model here.
We have, I love that Lisa already loves this one, because like peace out, we're done. We have two more in the box, so we're trying to get feedback. And Ken, I'm looking at time. So we've got three, we're playing with three designs and two models. So maybe if, since a lot of the common elements that you love is in all three, how about we take a look at one of the next ones and get some feedback?
Okay. That's not the microphone. We'll get to the stadium. Talking to the clicker. Okay, so our next one, we were inspired by this notion of cactus petals and how they unfold for this very special time of year. And so this design also unfolds, and it's a little bit different in its shape. I keep doing that, talking into the wrong item. So our cactus petals are envisioned to really be rooted in resilience, unfolding with intention, shaped by nature, inspired by the striking bloom of the cactus flower. Architecture really captures a sense of emergence and transformation. Growth is nurtured by conditions of the form. Central design language are these oblate rounded triangle pieces, which affords maximum views. So no matter which direction you're facing, you'll have a view out of a hallway in one direction or another, which really creates some interesting opportunities on the interior. It's an interesting geometry and one maybe you haven't seen before, but really becomes an ecology or an ecosystem. I'll explain some of the differences about this scheme from the previous scheme, the Arroyo scheme, as we go a little bit further. Two-story design, so similar in height, same idea of natural colors and materials with pops of accents, really integrated-themed courtyards, so there's three distinct outdoor spaces. CTE, performance, and social dining are where we've started, recognizing we need some input from insight from all of you. Integrated Performing Arts Center again, and maximize views, as I've mentioned, through the unique shape. Want to talk about the renders, Chris?
So I think one of the hallmark differences here from the Arroyo scheme is really this set of more so three individual courts, so really looking at the scale of courts and how they start to create student experience that could be themed and driven based on certain curriculum. So in this case, one of the other differences is really that the top floor floats in some opportunities and starts to create this interstitial space where you have a lot more opportunity for students to be on a second level and be shaded by the level above. So it is a lot more about creating an outdoor experience that is elevated. Similar to the Arroyo scheme, we are looking at seamless transition points that are programmed, so it's not necessarily just stairs that take you up, but these are programmed opportunities for learning, so outdoor learning, seating, spaces that are more formal, spaces that are more informal for students to gather. And so we're really looking and learning from West Point, where stairs were just this, seen as this, you know, hindrance, and looking here at stairs as opportunities where students want to coalesce and they don't feel bottlenecked, so the stairs are oversized, they're programmed. And similar to the Arroyo scheme, the articulation of the petals and the way they are formally start to also create viewed opportunities. So standing on the, essentially above the first floor, you start to have this very interesting, very nuanced outdoor connection, where again, certain views are framed, you have very shaded opportunities. You have very shaded opportunities for gathering and all of the vertical circulation, as you can see in the rendering on the screen and in front of me. The functional circulation, elevators and stairs to really get you to and from are starting to become opportunities at the juncture of the pedals themselves. So this is really the hinge point where circulation starts to flow. Whereas the more celebrated circulation moments, the learning stairs and so forth. The terrace you up to, let's say, opportunities for performance and gathering, all are tied together and sculpted throughout the courtyard itself.
This particular rendering is of the center courtyard space, which we see as an opportunity for both CTE and performance set off by our music and pack in the front of the building or the north side of the building as it's currently envisioned. And so here, this stage would afford an opportunity for students to share their music or their spoken word or whatever the case might be, a performance, if you will. But really unique opportunities and because of the height and that sort of balcony level, that first floor balcony level, you really start to get views of the top of the mountains in the background. You start to see the layers of campus unfold around you. Absolutely. So this was a great way to create kind of a neighborhood feel. So you might have distinct architectural qualities to each one of the neighborhoods, but they are sort of tied amongst them in each one of the seams. And so you could circulate either interior or exterior and go between them horizontally or vertically. If that makes sense, does it make sense?
No, I guess I just wonder as far as, you know, even with the extension of the passing periods, you know, security being able to get from like one place to another without like, I guess, having maybe like a group of them stationed kind of in each quadrant or so, would be the only concern I have. I like kind of the idea of the design is, I don't know if there's like a way to make like a path through everything. So I'm not sure if those are like classroom structures in the center, hallways, a mix of things. I think, yeah, something like that is like, if there's like a way from like one side to the other, it's like direct.
Now, the shortest distance is always a straight line. And you, with that design going straight line, it still won't be as conducive as the first design just because it's all consolidated in those two circles here. It's kind of consolidated in three. So if they were to go from one to the other end to go into the straight line, it's just going to be much more time consuming than the first design. Because if you look at the first design, they can almost schedule with the master schedule to go around it easier than the second design. I personally like to go with the first design as of date. Do then we can move on to the third one? Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine with that. But then again, I know what I like, so. Oh Fortnite, okay, that'll be fun. Pokemon, go.
All right. Yeah, try to keep them all distinctive and separate. Okay. Our third scheme is named River Nexus. And so again, back to our central theme of confluence. So we really took inspiration from Tres Rios and the landscape to really create a united flow of learning, culture and community. Each stream carries its own energy and identity. But together, they shape a shared landscape. So really dynamic, layered, but deeply rooted in place. The architecture mirrors branching and focusing and response to movement and relationships. Spaces unfold like eddies around a river's course, places to pause, connect and transform. Your convergence isn't a collision, but rather a collaboration. So some distinguishing features of the River Nexus, the two-story design with two connected outdoor courtyards, separate performing arts and music centers. So that's a distinction between this and the previous two schemes. The bridge in the center of the nexus is really seen as what we would call a center of excellence. So an opportunity to span campus with a learning bridge. Any number of premier programs could be on the bridge, would allow a unique feature that gives a view to the central courtyard space from the center. Similar to the other schemes, we see neutral colors. This time, a little bit older pops of colors against those neutrals. So you can see the bright yellow. And some renderings. Chris, you want to talk about the renders?
Thanks, Jason. So I think this, all the schemes kind of build on each other and they share a lot of DNA. But in this particular case, really driven by this notion of journey, of forward momentum. So looking at the racetrack, looking at the trajectory of the river, looking at the location and the convergence of I-10 and all of the other major arterials. This scheme really plays on movement and journey, so student journey as well. It's built upon a central courtyard that's scaled somewhat differently in proportion. So it's, it is still one larger courtyard that is contiguous. But versus West Point, it is scaled, it's pinched a little bit closer. So the point-to-point access in the courtyard is a little bit better. And as Jason had mentioned, we're really looking at this notion of bridging. So arrival as well as bridging and continuing the surface plane up to the second level. So if we may move to the second slide, please. No, it's okay. No worries. And still building upon this notion of landscape. And we don't see landscape as an afterthought. We see landscape and the building as fluid continuation. So here you have seated terrace planters. You have opportunities for students to gather and you have monumental stairs in the courtyard that serve functionally, but also as opportunities to sit and gather formally, informally. The use of glass in the center of the courtyard also brings this openness from the interior to the exterior. And then punctuating certain moments. So in this case, in the rendering that you're seeing here, using the building form to shade outdoor common area for students off the cafeteria and become hallmark moments where they're showcasing collaboration or specialty CTE programs. So really putting that on display to the public in a very deliberate way. There will be functional circulation at the points within the nexus where the floor plates meet. But really this bridging element we see is this very unique architectural opportunity to showcase library or innovation functions and make it very transparent, open, and really letting circulation happen on the exterior of the top level as well. Oh yes, that's actually a very important point that differentiates this scheme from the others. That is the performing arts center. So we really see the performing arts center in this scheme in particular as an independent structure where a shading, a shading structure, so let's say solar glass, would connect the three programs together and create a plaza that would then allow people to arrive under a shaded plaza, so students can arrive, visitors can arrive under the plaza. And then through, you know, later studies of how we're going to create a secure boundary around the plaza, let students be entering under this plaza, under the covered canopy rather, and then within the campus itself. So this really lets the circulation flow within the secured campus itself, but also has this opportunity for after-hours programs being sport-related or performance-related to have this nice civic plaza feel. Yes, so in this one, the performing arts center is integrated within the form. Yes, and this as well. I'm sorry. The cafeteria is here, so it still has views over. And this cantilevered structure here is what's shown in the rendering before this that creates the shaded opportunities as well. And we really see these end moments as having, as being beautiful collaboration spaces where you'd see that feeling and then it would create, again, shaded opportunities for students to gather in and around and under these overhead bridges and so forth.
Thoughts and questions on our third option, River Nexus?
I like the third one. If you look at the surface of it, it has the, it has the... No, no, I like the first one. I'm actually okay with either one. The only reason is I like the third one is that the nuance of it and the novelty of it. It is very, very unique. As far as the infrastructure and the way it's divided. And if you look at the security concerns that we had earlier, similar to the first one. In addition, that the vision, like the dividing how the building is divided up, it's more accessible. If you look at the students', you know, perspective traveling hypothetically, you know, their schedule is across the campus, you know, they do have a straight line to it and then crisscross, you know, with the stairs. And also, this is more fun for a student to, you know, spend their time. They're, you know, they stay at their school, you know, the longest of anywhere else, you know. They spend time with us more than they stay at home. This, they can kind of like socialize and still feel, you know, welcomed. Then they can make this a place of their own. As far as the cafeteria view right here, you're saying, into having that visceral view is, you know, is just as good. If not, it's a little bit more linear, it will give them more exposure and more students can enjoy. Because these students, if they have a choice, they want to be in a cooler area. The reason why they're forced to stay outside is because the cafeteria is too small. So I want this cafeteria to be a double-decker that will hold every student if they choose to. And then we want to give that room to them. For whatever reason, every school, the cafeteria doesn't hold every student. I get it, budget, but hopefully we can squeeze that in.
This may be an opportunity to answer your earlier question about the solar opportunities for our roof area of the stadium. And so this, this option, which we're just now demonstrating, affords sort of a form that mimics the mountain shape, right? With peaks facing south, so we get maximum exposure. So we would see a large opportunity for each one of these to contain solar panels to help power the campus on this particular scheme. So that's a distinction between the more peaked roof versus the flat oval roof.
A little bit more about the CTE bridge on the River Nexus. You know, we're talking about having all kinds of unique programming. What would that look like being on the bridge? And just elaborate more on that space for me.
I think it's an opportunity to have a different focus over time, right? If you talk about the longevity of the campus over generations of learners, your CTE programs will probably grow and evolve as technology grows and evolves or as crafts or the local economy supports careers for your students. And so I think that the opportunities for the bridge include a bunch of different curriculum choices. Some of your more NASCAR elements, your automotive, those would want to be on the ground floor. Obviously, we're not going to put those kinds of things on the second floor, but would have access on the first.
So I wanted to hear you say.
Yeah.
I was waiting for that. I was like, so where, where are the garages?
Car elevator.
Okay, we've got a hydro system.
In this level one diagram, that would be those programs and then the center of excellence on the bridge above. Sorry.
And then we also talked about spaces for our students with exceptional needs, recreational spaces, et cetera. Do you want to share a little bit more about where those might be? The River Nexus?
So what we're identifying in all the schemes right now is areas of core academics. The exact location of all of those programs will be determined once we get a little bit further into programming.
Well, I do want to also add, I want to just thank the entire team for doing their homework on the Tres Rios and sort of the environmental elements of our community to be able to incorporate what this design could look like. So I just want to say thank you for doing your homework there and really pouring into this. I'm a fan of the cactus petals and River Nexus. Was listening online about the Arroyo. But I still think, I still like, I still think the cluster design of the petals is kind of cool. And of course, the River Nexus as well. But just wanted to share that feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's definitely aspects of one and three that I prefer. I mean, I like that collab kind of cafeteria hangover space. But I kind of like the flow better of the first one here. And then they connected most, because most of the building is connected too, with the exception of the gym. The only reason I, I mean, that one's not, I think we could still work out like pathways for sure. But yeah, just safely transporting kids, you know, they're going to be walking. Plus like, you know, a seven-minute passing period, getting from there to the gym, like what's that going to look like? As opposed to like this, this concert, this map for sure. And then the only thing for me too is just like kind of the proximity for parking around the academic part, the pack. I think this one's a little bit better, possibly on the parking maybe, or maybe this one's a little bit parking. But yeah, just try to keep that in mind for parents and stuff as they're, you know, needing to come into the office and things like that. But yeah, I think I'm good with aspects of one and three. I kind of lean towards one myself with the flow, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, so unanimous is the River Nexus. Yeah, it's a, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with one and three, but I'm going to lean towards three because I'm looking at the student's perspective. If you look at the layout, it's more clearly marked where their classes will be. Whereas one, I think that it would be harder for the master schedule to, you know, whip up something that would be more efficient for the students. I'm not saying it's not possible. I think it would be harder based on the design and the travel time for the students. And the design three is, is unique in the way of the, you know, layout. There's texture in the layer, you know, even within the court space is well utilized than in the first design. I could be wrong. And then the aesthetics of the design from a distant, either be aerial or, or, you know, you know, horizontal to look, you know, from afar is impressive than the first one. The first one looked like my old high school back in the sixties. Not that it was bad, you know. But if we want to level it up, I think the River Nexus definitely achieved that. Well done.
And I think there are elements of, oh yeah.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt. So either the covered football fields could go with either of the schools?
Yeah.
Feedback on that before we lose you before your board meeting?
I mean, I personally don't care about the stadium. That's, that's Gias's, you know, baby. You know, it could be square, it could be round, it doesn't matter. But this design that will incorporate the pack and to be a streamlined to travel in between is very, very helpful. Because right after school, they may have an event that they're going to run to. They can go right through that corridor in the connectivity space.
You mentioned earlier, this one has more opportunity for energy efficiency, solar panels, et cetera, as opposed to the more rounded one. That's the main difference we're looking at.
The roof shape would support that facing south.
I'm looking at the side options here. I see one that has an outdoor field, football field. Does this first one not have one or practice?
Practice, practice field here on the north, good eye. And so this one, because of the circulation path and the way that the fields are organized, it's going to be more difficult to fit that practice field in to this particular option. This may be a quick opportunity to distinguish between the two. This side option has a longer parent drop-off lane than this side option does. This one affords that extra room, if you will, to make sure that we can fit that important practice field in. Whereas this one, we just might have to be creative with some of these areas to help distribute these courts into campus and allow maybe that field to be shaped up here. That's a study that we'll have to do as we get further along.
In terms of parking, which both spaces have the same capacity for number?
Both equal for parking.
Okay.
Member Dr. Luna Nahara, that's online. Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, my question would be of the three options that are being presented tonight. Do we have like a rough estimate on budget and what that might look like?
Thank you, this is Carmen from DLR Group. I have learned the lesson the hard way during escalation to not pretend I'm a contractor. So we are really excited to have Chase on board. I believe this is their first board workshop. They're going to be pricing, doing some high-level cost estimating right with us. So far, the schemes seem fairly comparable. If one was twice as much, we would definitely let you know, so that could factor in. Did that answer your question a little?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess it's maybe too soon to ask. I think my other question surrounds like the safety features. Like what are, what are some of the elements that you plan to incorporate in terms of safety? I know that we, some schools, at least some of the ones that I've worked at, do use like the glass that is bullet resistant and other features. the glass that is bullet resistant and, and other features like that. Also not having, you know, a whole lot of, of glass windows everywhere. I guess my thoughts or my question is, what are your thoughts around like student safety and then shaded areas for our students, given that the summers here are, are really brutal, falls are also pretty brutal? What elements do you anticipate incorporating into that?
So thank you for your questions. I'll address the safety and security first. I think each of the options has their unique advantages for safety and security, but overall, they all incorporate the opportunities for passive observation. So whether that's outside with a single vantage point, being able to see campus, whether that's inside and having visibility to classroom areas into courtyards. Of course, there will be technological security elements. There'll be opportunities as we move forward in the design process to be more specific about some of those pieces of technology and how they integrate into the design. We don't see a distinct advantage or disadvantage to any one of the three options when it comes to safety and security and believe that they can all be developed in a manner that meets your expectations. Yeah, and thank you, Carmen. So we do envision single-point entry after students arrive on campus and campuses secure, opportunities for after-hours, opportunities to allow folks to safely engage with campus, whether they're a community member, a parent, a visitor, whatever the case might be, in addition to keeping the students safe and secure. So I think that that will evolve over time as we get deeper into the process. And your second question, can you remind me again? Shade, thank you very much.
Oh yeah, just related to the like shaded areas, given the elements here in Arizona.
So thank you for that, that's a great question. Of course, thermal comfort is really important all year round. And we'll be using elements like solar glass for shading. We'll be using the architecture itself, so each one of these options has distinct advantages from an architectural perspective to create shade on the outside of campus, so we don't have to necessarily buy individual elements. We're going to try and integrate those into the design itself to make it, again, passive rather than an active measure.
My apologies, we will be wrapping up the meeting. We have three minutes left on the clock. Members, any questions, comments, please make them in the next three minutes. Thank you.
I think I'd just like to wrap up by saying thank you. We had a, a ask of you to give us some clear directions. I think we got some clear directions. Couple of great things we can grab from the other schemes wrapped into the River Nexus, some great things about safety and security, about parking and about accessibility that we'll take forward, and we will see you at the next workshop.
Carmen, thank you so much, yellow, our team. Chris, thank you for being here. I so appreciate your time and effort and great job. We love all the options. It definitely has a lot of care and thought into it. We couldn't ask for, you know, anything more. Well done. Members, any last comment before we close out? All right, I hereby adjourned a special session at 5:43. Thank you, everyone.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I need to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident?
Yeah.
You learned to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability, we are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different kinds of sports, like volleyball, and we played this one game is called that, we were, we were these, you know, these like football and stuff like that. Like we would have the ball, it stopped, and we'd throw it to our teammate. Now we just actually legit play, uh, play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just, every day is just, they have that, that positivity that can spread everywhere that gets contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow, and they truly do become like a team, and they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions is really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I, I danced, I was shy, but then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing, it can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners, giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, let's, let's plan these events, district events.
At first I got, I was coming into it not knowing what to expect, and I feel like that's most cases for like things that you haven't tried before. But I definitely feel that I have grown so much with it, I've learned a lot, and it's something that I want to do more with. Like I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces and know that what, what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, this program is making a difference.
I think the partners too.
For sure.
Like they get really excited to learn about our switch stuff and all the equipment we use and then encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really enjoy.
Join it because it's something where you're going to not only learn how to play a sport, but you're going to learn social skills with different people, knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just going to be us, it's going to be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're going to have that type of connection with special education and just gen ed kids.
I don't know, I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer, and I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes that not just cater to Unified Sports, but then cater to all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully, our program just continues to grow.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing when you could have a school that offers you everything? Does your school have a cafeteria like this? Or a performing arts center like this? Or a football field like this? Or an innovation center like this? Forward march! Or a path to the military like this? Or a career and technical education program like this? Or will their digital media program take you here? Or here? Or here? Or a media center like this? You can find all this and more at the Tolleson Union High School District. Enroll now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Pollak, and I am a math teacher at Tolleson Union High School. I'm here to talk about an important opportunity coming up, the ACT exam on October 22nd. The ACT is the key exam to determining how prepared you are for college, but also opens doors to scholarships and any other financial options. The ACT will also help you jumpstart any current plans you may have for the future, whether that's college, starting a career, or any other potential options. The ACT will also help you better prepare for your final attempt happening in March this year. But it's not just about you. Your performance also benefits our school and our entire district. When you perform well on the ACT, it shows how committed we are to academic excellence. It also leads to more opportunities and resources to all of us. So I encourage you to try your best, aim for proficiency, and show what you are capable of. Remember, if you are in need of any help, talk to a teacher or a counselor for tutoring or practice test opportunities. We all support you, and we want you to try your best on October 22nd.
Sierra Linda is on the rise. Whether our students dream of going to college, joining the military, or finding the perfect career after graduation, we will be there every step of the way. We believe the high school experience should be filled with unforgettable moments.
My plans for after graduation would have to be attending Morgan State University in Baltimore, Maryland, pursuing a bachelor's degree in psychology.
My school is my community.
My favorite thing about Sierra Linda has to be all the opportunities on campus, including the electives, you can choose, the clubs and the sports on campus.
Sierra Linda offers career and technical education options, performing and visual arts electives, 17 different sports, and more than 30 student clubs. We believe in your path, your future, your school. Join us, let's rise together.
In Phoenix, we are the number one public high school.
University High School has consistently been an A school and recognized as a top public school in the state as well as the nation.
Just a testament to the hard work that our kids put in, you know? No matter what the variables are, the continuity and the continued sense of excellence is really what makes it special.
Every year is special, and every year I say, I'm not going to get attached to these freshmen, so someday I can retire, and that never happens.
Our students are, of course, motivated by academic achievement, but that's not the totality of who our students are. Offering them opportunities for volunteer work, clubs that give them opportunities to give back to their community. That's a big part of it, too.
We are defying the odds and making a huge difference in our kids' lives. And this makes a difference in college knowing And this makes a difference in college knowing and going, as well as the future careers and even the networks that they are establishing and evolving in their future as they grow.
It changed my life coming here, from where I was as a teacher to where I am now. And to be able to give back to students and help them do whatever they want to do, it's a... that's really special.
We're not doing that.
I love this place, and I'm so happy that I'm here, and I'm so happy that I get to share this with my colleagues.
I love what we do here. I love watching the students flourish and go and get to do great things.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have your attention, I hereby call this call for public hearing to order at 6:00 PM. So we have some seats available here near in the front. So those that are standing in the back, please join us in the front rows. There are plenty of seats up here. That way you guys don't have to stand for so long. Feel free to come up and sit the seats in the front row. If you're district staff personnel, please come forward and have a seat. Row call, please.
Dr. Luna Nahara.
Here.
Mr. Del Palacio.
Here.
Mr. Ortega Romero.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
And Ms. Sun.
Here.
Okay, Superintendent Gaias.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, we are here to do our final revision for the 2024-25 budget. And here to present tonight is Mr. Ken Hicks, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Gaias, colleagues and community members. Thank you very much for allowing me to present our last budget revision of the year. So this is a budget revision. School districts are required by May 15th to do their, any final budget revision, so this one day early before we get to that. And for the most part, anytime that you're doing a budget revision or the budget adoption, a public hearing is required. So that is, if you ask, why are we having a public hearing at this time? It is a requirement. We need to revise our budget to make sure that we pick up all available budget capacity that's before us. And so I'll go through that really quickly, why we're doing this. Technically, we're not... in December, a lot of districts did the budget revisions, and you're probably used to, most Decembers, we do a budget revision. We did not do a budget revision this year because we were not required to. Because we're a growing district, a lot of times, ADE, if you are shrinking in size, they want you to revise the budget. They want to make sure you have a plan and know that you can get through the year. We were the opposite, that we were actually growing, and so we were not required to revise our budget. What that also did at that time is, if you remember, in October, we also do our annual financial report for the previous year, which locks in all the previous year's spending and all the carryforwards amount. When you do a budget revision, a lot of times, you then sync up all your carryforwards. So because we did not do that December budget revision, we are doing it for two main reasons: to pick up those budget capacities, which is to increase... to put in all the accurate, so take out the estimated carryovers, put in the accurate carryover, because we've completed last year in the AFR, and then the increase of student count. So it's just two reasons of why we did, and we put our budget adopted. I think we're at thirteen-six, and so we were almost at thirteen-nine, so almost grew by three hundred students this year. Just for context, as we're looking at our budget limits, and this one is going up with, as I mentioned, the increased carryforward and increased student amount is at $182 million. Capital, as we revised our budget in January to move over the $25 million, we moved the $25 million over to capital. So capital is larger than we've seen in a long time. And just to give you context, I want to just give a little context of where we were seven years ago, so just so you could see the large amount of growth that we have with these new limits. The second thing I always like to do is, yes, this is this year's numbers, on the right side what it is, and then also just looking at next year's numbers. So I do like to provide that, because we're always looking at one year that we're living in, and we're also looking at the year that we're looking forward to. So we're looking at what carryforward we're going to project with for this year, look at, as we're revising the budget, taking a look at that. We're also looking at what's going to happen next year. And the numbers for next year, as you can see with the 2% increase to base support level, classroom site fund per pupil amount is going up to 842. State retirement that we pay on all of our employees, or the ACR that we pay on all leased employees, are both going down. So we have revenues going down, expenses going down, going... revenues going up, expenses going down for next year. So I always like to give a little preview of what's happening, and then just the pending legislative decisions, even though we know that the legislature has not approved a budget yet, and we always hope for more money and more funding for next year. I think right now, everybody's just looking at the base level, which I already told you in the previous slide of the increase, the 2% increase for capital. Transportation will go up as well. And then the big one that a lot of people are still talking about right now is the AEL exemption. So the legislature giving us the funds, are they going to let us spend the funds? And so that's just really trying to be short and sweet, because this is a budget revision. We're already executing our plan from what we did from our meeting confer last year and everything in this year, capturing all the carryforward that was solidified when we did our AFR, and then increasing based on student achievement, or student enrollment, so our ADM. That is all of why we're doing a budget revision and what the new limits are, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, so now we will be...
Point of order. This is the public hearing, and you're supposed to allow the public to come, and if they have any questions, address the board, specifically on the budget.
Dr. Luna Nahara, you interrupted in the middle of my statement to call for the public hearing to discuss the second revision to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. For those that would like to comment, please come forward with your statements.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Diana Morrow. I am a parent to a student of Tallison Union High School. I'm also a part of my family that's... I'm also a member of the family that's been in this community for more than a hundred years. This is just the latest waste of taxpayer dollars. A consent agenda item tonight to approve this budget expenditure, an SPS architecture contract for three projects related to ROTC at Westview High School. SPS submitted its proposal, which is based on a construction cost of $16 million. Then they charged 6% of that amount for a total of $990,000 in addition, nearly $1 million on top of that. The cost of these three projects is only projected to be $10.5 million. Based on these architectural fees, they're overcharging the district more than $350,000. Gaias and Hicks rubber stamped it and put it on the agenda tonight, because that's what they do, they like to spend money. Two questions that need to be asked is, do we adjust the rates for the architectural services down when we get a final GMP? And why are we even having consent agenda items for items that are $15 million? These items need to be discussed. They're not for you to make a decision on. They're for us to make a decision on. This is our community. This is our money, not yours, sir.
Thank you for your comments. And any other public comments, please approach to the podium.
My name is Lisa Daly. I'm a parent here. I have twins that are going to be graduating here next year. I'm highly concerned with the spending of this district, considering that I don't want to happen to this district what happened to Isaac. I grew up in Isaac District, so I'm very concerned where my money is going. I've lived in this district for twelve years now. I chose to move to Tallison because I thought it was a small-town feeling of family and taking care of our own. I don't feel like that's happening with this board. It's a little scary, to be honest, because do any of your kids come to these schools? Are they involved in these schools at all? Did you grow up in this area? I feel like that makes a big difference also. I just want to know, make sure that we, as a people, have a say where our tax money goes to. It's not for one person or this board to decide when it's our money, and that's already a lot of misspending with lawsuits and whatnot, and we won't go there, but we all know what's going on. So I just want to make sure that the spending is correctly done, and it's governed correctly and not by one person or two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, please approach the podium.
President Sun. President Sun. These comments are for comments regarding the budget revision only. If they have a public comments, they can fill out a form and speak at that time.
Assistant Lupita Goodman, thank you for your reminder. For those approaching the podium, please stay germane to the topics at hand, and that is the budget. And make sure you fill out a form. Are they still able to fill out the form?
If anybody wants to fill out a form, as long as they get it within the next five minutes, I'll take it.
Any other comments regarding the budget that was just presented by our CFO? And now we will move on to Agenda C, opening of the regular meeting. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Tallison Union High School District at 6:12. Row call, please.
Dr. Luna Nahara.
Here.
Mr. Del Palacio.
Here.
Mr. Ortega Romero.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
And Ms. Sun.
Here.
Thank you.
And now to the next item, C2, approval of the regular agenda. It is recommended that the governing board approve the regular meeting agenda. I hereby motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Dr. Luna Nahara. Mr. Del Palacio.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
And Ms. Sun.
Yes. Now, Item D1, the celebration, end-of-year staff recognition. Superintendent Gaias.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. At this time, we'd like to honor all of our staff who have hit milestones with their years of service, and also our retirements in the audience, so... Turning it back to you to read the list of our guests to be honored. When you hear your name called, please come up. We have a plaque for you that we can get to.
All right, Superintendent Gaias, and for our five years of service here at Tallison Union High School District, years of service, starting with Danielle Pham, the Application Support Coordinator from our district office, Blanca Arrelo Manos, Bus Monitor, District Office Transportation, Alfonso Colorado, Bus Driver, District Office Transportation, Janine Dickens, Driver, Non-CDL, District Office Transportation, Destiny Scott, Bus Driver, District Office Transportation, Charles Smith, Driver, Trainer, District Office Transportation, Anna Vergas Ramos, Driver, Non-CDL, District Office Transportation, Andrea Hess, Bus Driver, District Office Transportation, Tamarie Decker, Teacher, Copper Canyon. Next will be Ladonna Curbs, Teacher, Copper Canyon. Danielle Lopez, Custodian III, Copper Canyon, Kennedy Richardson, Teacher, Copper Canyon High School, Marcela Romero Espinoza, Nutrition Services Associate I, Copper Canyon, Thomas Sandoval, Teacher, Copper Canyon, Ryan Sears, Teacher, Copper Canyon, Chad Tally, Tally, Teacher, Copper Canyon, Azanthi Belisquist, Teacher, Copper Canyon, Lauren Slate, Teacher, DLA, Jessica Daniels, Guidance Counselor, LHA, Elizabeth Mendoza, Admin Assistant Principal, LHA, Glenda Garcia, Instructional Assistant III, La Jolla, Gregory Hiball, Teacher, La Jolla, Abel Hurtado, Raquel Manos, Josefina Relles, William Sorensen, Alma Aringan Gonzalez, Cyan Arita, Teacher, Sierra Linda, Corey Helsman, Teacher, Nathan Hughes, Teacher, Edwin Nova, Lauren Zamora Campbell. For those butchering your name, my deepest apologies. And then, let's see, then we have Patricia Bounds, Sandra Wellwards, Derek Falsen, Jason Leonard, Orgy Antiveros.
If you heard your name called for five years of service, please come up to be recognized. We have a certificate and pin for you.
All right, continuing the five years. Okay, that's okay. Janice Ziegler, Marguerite Anderson, Lindsay Christiana, Michelle Croft, Steve Coon, Randy Fulford, Colin Markgriff, Ashley Pollak, Orgy Perez, Brandy Zukunek, Tyler Hill, Chloe Mendola, Zira Morello, Elena Wofford, Sidney Wright, Gabrielle Clark, Teresa Deacon, Melissa Green, Lydia McBride, Alexia Shantov, Gazelle Adam, Maria Bess Duran, Jerry Ball, Carla Barrios, Ting Ting Kai, Justina Canahan, Rebecca Daniels, Levy Daroon, Michael Dodge, Amanda Anzinas, Adriana Esquivel, Jesus Feliciano Alvarez, Jordan Floyd, Melissa Grimshid, Ramona Hernandez Delap, Laberan, Amber Jones, Ronald Lieberman, Adrian Luna, Valupe Moreno, Laura Morgan, Miguel Angel Abregón, Jennifer Cuiver, Anna He Salgadot, Karina Santos, Jeffrey Scobie, Yvonne Shonohiui, Anitra Sucks, Talisha Dees, Ernesto Castado, Denise Venezuela, Andrew Valesco, Manuel Visera, Jessica Walker, Nicole Westcott, Haley Wood Mack. Thank you. Yep. And now on to the 10-year of service here at Tolleson Union High School District. Patrick Bounds, Sandra Wellwards, Derek Falsen, Jason Leonard, Orgy Antiveros, Maria Castanilla, Sabrina Morel, Jihan Abdalaba, Ashley Benston, Curtis Benston, Christina Castro, John Lance. Derek Lehman, Laura Melde, Alex Deveno, Victoria Renteria, Catherine Sharp, Cami Burgas, John Cadigan, Fernando Diaz, Tricia Egwi, Petra Chavez, Martin Moia, Mark Owens, Catherine Labashir, Erica Mays, Christine Miller Bow, Naye Lee Arikhan, Catherine Barnett, William Shafi, Horatio Horn, Justin Lamp, Carmen Noriega, Jennifer Weber, Ovita Seja, and Norma Diaz Roof Venezuela. And now we'll move to the 15-years of service, starting off with Edrin Freeman, Omari Valerie, Melissa Alcántara, Danielle Figaro, Karen Furtkert, Maria Antones Lucio, Lynette Stark, John Mailer, Aguida del Rencon. Good job, thank you. And now to the 20-years of service here at Tolleson Union High School, starting off with Jeremy Goodsell, Bobby Morel, Heather Eaton, Patricia Manos, Carlos Rodriguez, Jesus Cadel, George Burgas, and Sarah Eby. Thank you for sticking with us. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, great job. And now we move to the 25-years of service, starting with Lisa Fernandez Corona. Glenn Hess, Scott Richardson. Congrats, thank you. Natalie Quinones. Looking good for 25. Great job, congrats. And now to the 30-years of service, starting with Portia Soto. Matthew Garrett.
Aw, thank you, Harsha.
Gregory Baldoni. And lastly, Clarice Miller. And now we'll move to the retirees, and we'll start with Patricia Bounds, Amy Castile, Derek Falsen, Keith Hicks, Joseph Ortiz, Jeffrey Newman, Rita Harper, Juliana Hernandez, Michael Abyss, Yvette Guvia. Wow, you look familiar. Good job. Oh, come on, come on, stick around. Oh, you can stick around, thank you. Yeah. So I said Yvette Guvia, Sheila Potte, Eric Walton, Suzanne Roy, Monica Aldama, Jean Baldinelli, Patricia Segura, Robert Irish. Good job, congrats. Francis Madrano. Thank you. Mark Madrano, Paula Torres, Carrie Sherting, Liz Aaronson, Valerie Cox. Good job. Dr. Oscar Lobbo, Herman Manzeneres, Clarice Miller, Matthew Pedersen. Good job. Alexia Shantov, Francisco Adriando Ruiz. Thank you. Lynn Daniel. Good job. Bernice Garcia, Randy Haskins. Susan Hennessy. Lauren Samkowoski. Congrats. Do we have Teresa Deacons in the audience? And now that concludes our celebration, end-of-year staff recognition. And I'd like to, again, congratulate all of you for your services and appreciation and gratitude. Everything that, you know, we are doing for our students, for student outcomes, none of it would have happened without any of you guys. So thank you again for everything. Great job. And now we're going to move to the, no, we're going to go to the next Item D, I'm sorry, E1, with the summary of the current events. Superintendent Gaias, please take away.
Yes. Madam President, members of the board, and for all those that are leaving, feel free to grab a cookie on the way out. But at the end of April, the Sierra Linda Band traveled to Anaheim, California to compete in the National Heritage Festival. It was an incredible event, featuring many outstanding bands and orchestras. Sierra Linda's band competed against eight other ensembles in their division, and they earned a gold rating, finishing third overall. As we sat awaiting the results, you could feel the nerves and excitement among our students. The celebration didn't stop there. Sierra Linda's guitar ensemble delivered a phenomenal performance that truly stood out. Overall, the trip was a tremendous success. Congratulations to the students of Sierra Linda High School in both band and guitar ensemble. We are proud of you, so great job, Sierra Linda. University High School was recognized at the 2025 AZ FASPA Challenge Award Celebration on May 7th, co-hosted by the Arizona Board of Regents and Cox Communications. Schools from across the state with the highest FASPA completion rates were celebrated for their outstanding achievements. University High School is ranked second in the state among small high schools. This is a testament to the dedication and persistence of all the students and staff at University High. At the celebration, three seniors from each winning school were awarded a brand-new iPad, generously provided by Cox Communications. Our seniors could not attend the event due to a scheduling conflict with AP testing, but the University High team collected the iPads for them. It was a tremendous event, and congratulations to all our students over at University High School. The Arizona CTE Curriculum Consortium would like to thank the dedicated career and technical education teachers and staff who have generously shared their time and expertise this year. One of our district teachers was highlighted as an individual who has contributed to the development of high-quality curriculum, instructional resources, assessment tools, and other materials for their CTE programs. Congratulations to Mr. Joshua Hernandez, Software and App Design Instructor with our Distance Learning Academy. We are proud of you for representing both DLA and our district in such a positive way, so once again, congratulations out to Josh. A student at Copper Canyon had her artwork featured recently at the inaugural Arizona Department of Education Youth Arts Month Festival at Wesley Bowlin Plaza. Unice Olivet is a freshman in Brian Kilgore's Art 12 class. Her artwork was displayed in the middle of March. Unice's artwork will also be displayed in the Katherine Rusty Foley and Zarco Barrero Student Art Gallery at the Arizona Department of Education's Jefferson Building. Certificates of recognition were mailed to each artist's school after the festival's conclusion, so congratulations again out to Unice. We have some exciting news on the esports program at Sierra Linda High School. Their varsity esports team completed an undefeated regular season with a perfect 11-0 record, a remarkable achievement in the school's history. This accomplishment is the result of dedication and hard work, with the team practicing Monday through Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. and competing in matches every Wednesday. A special commendation goes to our team captain, Santiago Leon, who went undefeated this season without dropping a single match. His incredible performance has attracted interest from several universities, which can possibly help him continue his esports career at the collegiate level. The junior varsity team also had a phenomenal season, finishing with an impressive 8-3 record and securing second place in the state rankings. So congratulations out to the esports program at Sierra Linda High School. We have some exciting highlights from the 2025 JAG National Career Development Conference held recently in Indianapolis. The West Point High School JAG program returned with more awards than any other school in the country, competing against students from 37 states and over 1,800 participants. West Point awardees, under the direction of teacher Mr. Ryan Clemm, include National Outstanding Chapter of the Year, Love Project, first place overall, Project-Based Learning, fourth place overall, Career Preparation, sixth place overall, Knowledge Bowl, fourth place overall, and Business Plan, first place overall. Students also had the opportunity to meet JAG National President, Janelle DeRae, and visit the iconic Indy 500 Raceway Museum. Congratulations, West Point JAG students. In addition, Tolleson Union High School's JAG program, under the helm of teacher Richard Wahlberg, had an outstanding showing. Their students finished seventh out of 58 teams nationally, and their goal going into the competition was to make it into the stage at the final ceremony, and they proudly achieved it by finishing in the top 10. So congratulations out to the Tolleson JAG program. The Arizona Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents' Aspiring Leaders Academy is a distinguished two-year leadership development program designed to prepare the next generation of equity-driven school and district leaders, led by retired superintendent Mr. Joe Quintana. The program brings together aspiring leaders from across Arizona for five leadership sessions each year, in August, October, January, March, and May. These sessions focus on systems thinking, strategic planning, educational policy, and transformational leadership practices, all anchored in equity and excellence. At the 2025 Phoenix Region Recognition Ceremony held at Copper Canyon High School, leaders from multiple districts were honored for their successful completion of the program. Representing the Tolleson Union High School District were Lindsay Christiana from Tolleson Union, Jason Fleming from Tolleson Union, Carney McReynolds from Copper Canyon, and Sarah Contreras from Sierra Linda. TUHSD's leadership, including Dr. Reserva Laguna Squatley, Dr. Felipe Baez, and Christina Boston, were all present to celebrate their outstanding contributions and growth. A special moment was shared when Dr. Laguna Squatley had the honor of pinning Ms. McReynolds in recognition of her leadership journey. So congratulations to all of our AZ Alas completers of the aspiring academy. Congratulations to Copper Canyon High School on being selected as the recipient of the 5A Glenn Treadaway Sportsmanship Award. Copper Canyon will be honored onstage at the upcoming AIA Night of Champions Award Show on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, at the Vista Center of the Arts in Surprise, Arizona. The event will be livestreamed on AIA's YouTube channel. Congratulations once again, Copper Canyon, seizing your opportunity to show off your sportsmanship. And that is just some of the highlights since our last meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent Gaias. And now to the board members update, member Dr. Luna Nahara.
Yes, thank you for that. I do want to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all our teachers, staff, and teachers aides for everything you do for our students and helping them achieve their success. And I also want to recognize School Nurse Appreciation Week. It's been a while since we've seen each other, so thank you so much for taking care of our students and making sure that they are doing well in our schools. I do want to congratulate all schools on reaching another end of the year. Your hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed. It is a very long year. It is a very tough year. We've got a little bit more to get over that hump, and so I'm wishing everybody, students, staff, and parents, the resilience to get us through graduation and onto a very well-deserved summer break. Last but not least, I do want to apologize to the schools. I did request to speak at the graduations, but my request was denied with no explanation. And so another example of retaliatory... Retaliatory not allowing me to speak and address the graduating class of 2025. So on that note, congratulations to everybody who's graduating in 2025, and especially to our students who will continue onto the summer and pull it off in the summer. Thank you.
Now, member Del Basio, if you have any comments and updates?
Yeah, just two quick updates. I want to thank our chief warrant officer over at Tolason High School Hall for putting on a tremendous event, him and his cadets. Those JROTC students are just amazing. I had the opportunity to attend their award banquet, and they were honored with scholarships and service awards, and it was just very inspiring to see our young students, or future cadets, rather, in that program doing excellent, doing a tremendous job. So huge shout-out to them for organizing a great event for their parents and for their community. Second, I'm going to give another shout-out to Ms. Eaton and her team over at La Jolla Community High School for putting on an amazing Lobo Fest. I had the chance to attend with my kids, and it was wonderful. I mean, they had a foam party, food trucks, there was arts and crafts. We had community partners tabling out there. The event was jam-packed with students and families for end-of-year celebration. It was really beautiful to see. So thank you to the entire La Jolla team that were a part of organizing that for our students.
Thank you, Member Del Basio. And now to Member Ortega Romero.
Yeah, I also want to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, we sincerely won't be here without the amazing teachers and staff that are in our schools. So thank you to you and thank you to the students that really just pushed through to the end of the school year. And now we're just days away from graduation, a heavily anticipated day that I think, for the most part, we all look forward to. So enjoy it. Really just go out there and have fun.
Thank you, Member Ortega Romero. Now to Member Chapman.
Yeah, just a couple things. Also, I was able to attend and speak at the Sierra Linda Awards Ceremony. So thank you, Mr. Macho, for the invite. Broke last year's record for scholarship dollars, and I think the goal was set again for junior class, going into senior class next year, to continue breaking that record. So I know we've also had some, you know, records across the district on scholarships. So and with that, yeah, next week, we're going to have a couple of really big days for a lot of students and staff across the district. So I just want to thank everybody across the district, staff, parents, and students for all the work you've done the last four years to get these graduates ready for college career, joining our armed services, and then whatever path they choose. I appreciate knowing that this district kind of helped get them there, and certainly with all the hard work and dedication from all of you, especially as we just recognize, you know, probably hundreds, probably close to thousands of years of service. Jeremy can do the math real quick, maybe. But just thank you all for all the work that you've done this year and certainly the four years for the students that we're going to be celebrating next week. And hopefully, those of you that get to enjoy your summer, get away before it gets too hot.
Thank you, Member Chapman. And I would like to read a letter that was sent by a constituent, and it starts with, "Dear Board Members, I want to take this opportunity to commend the newly-elected Board members for their leadership and dedication to strengthening our school district. Their commitment to transparency, accountability, and community engagement is evident in the work they have already begun, and I fully support their efforts in guiding our school district forward. Under this new Board leadership, our district demonstrates strong financial stewardship, ensuring that resources are effectively allocated to support initiatives. Their commitment to maintaining fiscal responsibility while expanding outreach efforts is critical to the ongoing success of our school district. As a member of the community, I look forward to collaborating with the Board and the team to advance our shared goals, ensuring that our school district remains a leader in civic engagement, advocacy, community representation. With this team vision and commitment to service, we are well-positioned to build an even stronger, more inclusive school district. I appreciate your dedication to this work in our community. Sincerely, Cassandra Penna." And now we are going to recess. But before we recess, I want to, you know, echo all our members' statement of all the great celebrations. I personally attended the ZELA, the multilingual, or more than two, and as well as our ELL, you know, students for their great achievements in academia and supporting this, you know, diverse community. We also want to, you know, recognize among my fellow Board members and Board members of the past to continue the path to increase teachers' pay. We are now the highest-paying salary for teachers, and the leader of that initiative is our very own CFO, Kenev. Thanks. And, you know, he will be leaving us at the end of this month. You know, what we went through was a storm, and we came out, you know, better and stronger than when we started. Our budget is in the surplus. We have sustainability to maintain the increase so that we can have student outcome.
Point of order.
And when we have student outcomes...
Your comments are not germane to the agenda.
We are going to have the ability to pay that back to our communities in their housing values and community wealth. Ultimately, we are pushing for letter-A grade campuses.
Your update is not germane to an update, a Board member update, President Sun. You're off-topic.
So we are going to acknowledge... So we are going to acknowledge our very own CFO, Ken Hendricks, if we can give him applause for his dedicated service as he's been, continue to produce his best. Congratulations, and we'll miss you. And with that said, we're going to take a five-minute break.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids, who can't typically participate, are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I need to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident? You learned to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability. We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different types of sports, like volleyball. And we played this one game that's called that. We were these, you know, these like youth sports and stuff like that. Like we would have the ball, it stopped, and we'd throw it to our teammate. Now we just like legit play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just every day is just, they have that positivity that can spread everywhere. Like it's contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year, and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow, and they truly do become like a team, and they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions, is really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities, and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy, but then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing. It can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything Unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners, giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, "Let's plan these events, district events."
At first, I was coming into it not knowing what to expect. And I feel like that's most cases for like things that you haven't tried before. But I definitely feel that I've grown so much with it. I've learned a lot, and it's something that I want to do more with. Like I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces and know that what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, "This program is making a difference."
I think the partners, too.
For sure.
They get really excited to learn about our switch stuff and all the equipment we use, and then encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really need.
Join it because it's something where you're going to not only learn how to play a sport, but you're going to learn social skills with different people, knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just going to be us, it's going to be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're going to have that type of connection with special education than just Gen Ed kids.
I don't know. I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer, and I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes that not just cater to Unified Sports, but then cater to all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully, our program just continues to go.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing?
I would like to call this meeting back to order.
Does your school have a cafeteria like?
And now we will go to the Agenda F, Public Participation. Ms. Goodman, have you received any requests to address the Board? Due to the volume of our participation, we're going to reduce our public comment from three minutes to two minutes. Please limit your outbursts. Please respect the forum and no outbursts, or we will ask you to leave. You need to be recognized and not be disturbing the meeting, which you guys are doing now. So please refrain from your outbursts, or I will ask you guys to leave. Our first commenter will be Brett. Bert Herzog.
Good evening, President Sun, Vice President Chapman, governing board members, Superintendent Gaias, Ms. Goodman, district staff, and guests. My name is Bert Herzog, and I'm a proud employee of the Tolason Union High School District. Give you a little bit of background about my roots here in the district. My grandfather owned the land that Littleton School District sits on. So we've been around for a long, long time. His brother, my great uncle, owned the only TV repair shop in Avondale, back before video games and had the big tubes and things, so a long time ago. My dad, actually, who would have been 85 this year... and things. So a long time ago. My dad actually, who would have been 85 this year, went to Talson High School and actually played football for Talson for a short period of time. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the many reasons why I love my job at TU HSD and why I was excited to come to Talson about five years ago. I was excited to come because of the reputation of Talson. I was excited to come because of the accomplishments that Talson has. Some of the things that I wanted to talk about very quickly are the accomplishments of letter grades going up in our district. Those that haven't gone up are trending the right way. They're going up as our board celebrations have happened time and time again. Recruiting and retention in our district of our employees is at 97%. That doesn't happen often. I've been at a few other districts. Raisins that are given to our district are given across the board and it's to every person. So every person in our, in our district is valued. All of that is a direct result and it didn't come by accident. It's a direct result of our leadership in our district and our governing board, the vision and goals from our governing board and leadership team. I ask you as our governing board to stay the course, keep allowing our amazing leadership team to continue to do the job that you've entrusted them to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bert. And our next commenter will be Gladys Contreras. Please approach the podium.
Commencing its fifth month, this newly elected school board has demonstrated an appetite for recklessly spending district funds, which has led to the erosion of public trust. After settling an EEOC complaint for $450,000 in favor of Superintendent Jeremy Caius, the board then proceeded to reward Caius, who is uncertified, with a three-year contract of $361,584 plus performance pay of more than $72,300. He is the highest paid superintendent for a B-rated district in the state according to State 48 News. The A-rated Gilbert Unified School District has 39 schools and has more than 33,000 students. Their superintendent has a base salary of $240,000 with a $12,000 performance pay. In contrast, the Talson District only has eight schools with three non-traditional schools and almost 14,000 students. Let's not forget the $25 million that this board voted to bail out the financially mismanaged Isaac School District with a lease purchase agreement of the Isaac Middle School. Regarding the $450,000 EEOC settlement, Arizona Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Horn, said, "This settlement is outrageous." And the board members who are approved should be recalled for wasting nearly half a million dollars that could have been spent on students and teachers. Ergo, we demand the immediate resignation of the following board members: Sun, Chapman, Del Palacio, Miguel Ortega Romero, and Superintendent himself, Jeremy Caius. If you don't resign, we will actively campaign to make sure our bonds and overrides fail. No bonds until you're gone. Consider the veracity of the following statements.
Time, please have a seat. Thank you so much for your comments.
Your time is at, Ms...
Our next speaker will be Melissa Grimshaff. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, President Sun, Vice President Chapman, members of the board, Superintendent Caius, Ms. Goodman. I wanted to speak on Policy IJNDB, Use of Technology Resources Instruction. Some edits to which additions are coming before you for a first reading tonight. The section that is new has to do with artificial intelligence and how we use that or teach students to use it in the classroom. I would like to speak on behalf of my members as the president of the Talson Union Education Association and state, there is a, there is a sentence in there that reads, "Teachers should include relevant lessons on correct and responsible use of AI. And students should be taught standards regarding plagiarism and source citation and should use these guidelines if AI is used for a school assignment." I did some research, searching through the policy. I might be wrong, but this would be the only time that in board policy that is stated what teachers should include in their lessons. This scares me a little bit because it could come back to work against our teachers. If we are told what we should include in an English class, teaching about plagiarism and citing their sources may be part of usual what they teach. And a science class, I might be teaching students what to do, that they need to use their own brains. And I don't like AI in my classroom, but that's my personal opinion. But does that mean that our math teachers are also going to have to teach lessons on the proper use of photo math and their phones during lessons? So I ask you, as you look at this first reading, to also ask if we really should be stating what teachers should include in their lessons in our board policy where changing it is a little bit more difficult. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our next guest, please approach the podium, Patrick Braze.
Hello, President Lisa Sun, Vice President Steve Chapman, Dr. Luna Nahara. My name is Patrick Braze. I'm pretty new here. I will admit that. This is maybe my third year here. I originally came from a school district that was mentioned earlier, Gilbert Public School Systems. I was there when they went through a period of incredibly explosive growth. I remember my high school basically being told, okay, you can safely house 1,500 kids. There were 3,300 when I graduated. You cannot afford to get behind on bonds when you're experiencing explosive growth like this because facilities suffer, teacher retention suffers, and honestly, the kids suffer. And that's what this is about, is those students and everything that they're going to be learning, everything they're going to be taking with them, and everything they will contribute to the community afterwards. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Patrick. Our next speaker will be Georgie Stafford. Please come to the podium.
I just want to say that I think you all are doing a great job and I support you. And I want to thank you for all that you do for the students. I've been to several of the high schools and the programs that I've seen, I'm very impressed with. And as far as a bond goes, I'm a retired teacher. And the bonds that were passed when I was teaching, I got graphing calculators in my classroom. I got smart boards. I got new desks. I got many things in my classroom that benefited the students from the passage of the bonds. And I thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Catherine Rodriguez.
First of all, I would just like to commend all you people that have worked so hard to bring the school system that you have. Because I moved here in 2011 and I remember what your schools looked like. I know you've worked hard to bring them to what they are today. And I've gladly paid the extra taxes because I know what it means to those kids. And I can see the difference in the kids in the neighborhood. They're proud of their schools. And I'm proud of you. I just want you to know that I appreciate what you're all doing.
Thank you for your comments. And our next guest will be Diana Morrow. Please come to the podium.
Good evening again. My name is Diana Morrow. I'm a parent to a student that attends Talson Union High School. And my family's been in this community for more than 100 years. I'm coming up here tonight to say just a few things. One, the last time I was in this meeting a couple of weeks ago, I left and said some ugly words. And you know, I said that because your behavior is vulgar. So the community's response is going to be vulgar. And if you don't like it, then maybe you should change the way you're making decisions. Because this, this is not your money. This is our money. This is our community. We work hard every single day. We have jobs. I know not all of you guys actually go to fucking work. I'm sorry. My bad. That's my bad. I know not all of you guys go to work, but we all have jobs. And we pay the taxes that you guys are asking for this money. It's not your money to be paying a HUD program, community, to help the community with that. That's not your job. Work about the, worry about the curriculum. Worry about our students' safety. Worry about if they have the supplies that they need, if the teachers have the resources that they need. You don't need to be worrying about the city's HUD program. Y'all aren't even allowed to be participating in the city. And that brings me to my next thing. Today, you guys, I was given a letter. And I don't know what the, how this letter says because I haven't opened it yet. But they, these guys right here, these people, they chose for the biggest man in this room, that man at the back that's standing there, Mr. Security, they chose for him to come up to me, this little lady, barely even five foot with these heels on, and to give me this letter to intimidate me. And then after I spoke and I got everybody riled up, they came back and had me, had him come again, touching me after I asked him to leave me alone. I know that your behavior is crazy because you're not even allowed to be in the city. You can't intimidate me. I'm not going anywhere. My family's been here 100 years. They built this. This community supports me and we're not going anywhere.
Thank you for your comments. And our next guest, please approach the podium, will be Alex Stivana.
President Sun, Vice President Chapman, members of the governing board, Superintendent Caius, Ms. Goodman. I'm Alex Stevanov and I'm a teacher at Copper Canyon. And it's time once again for my somewhat annual State of the District address. Somewhat annual tradition that nobody asked for, but I'm back to do it anyway. For the record, I'm here only representing myself and my experiences in this district. There's been so much change in this district since I started here 10 years ago, but there's also quite a bit that remains the same. Vice President Chapman, Mr. Del Palacio, you were both members of the board when I started here. And you two bear the witness of the growth of our district in that time. Due to the support of the community administration and governing board, there's a lot of familiar faces at the years of service recognition tonight. And I'm sure the list is a lot longer than it was 10 years ago. And this is a good thing. One new thing to our district is our partnership with AIU. I participated in this program and it was awarded a master's degree for administration a few months ago. I'd like to formally thank everyone for their support of this program. If I learned anything from my time shadowing the administrators at my site, it's that I don't want to be an administrator. Oh my goodness. Those hours, let me tell you. Nonetheless, the things I learned in the program are applicable, applicable to being a teacher too. So I hope to repay the district for their investment by using what I learned to improve my leadership and instruction in my own classroom. In other news, there is now shaded parking for teachers and a new sidewalk at Copper Canyon High School. Some of you will remember my mentioning these things in previous State of the District addresses. In what other district can a teacher say they brought some ideas to the administration and the administration took them seriously and worked on improvements? I thank you for your attention to detail here. Speaking of improvements, I only had one idea for changes in the future. With the advent of one-to-one instruction with district-issued laptops, I think it's time to reconsider outlet availability in the classrooms. I can't speak for other sites or even most rooms at my current site for that matter, but I'm working with a series of power strips to ensure students have charged devices. I'd like to close by saying that as my 10th year at TU HSD comes to an end, I cannot wait for my 11th year to begin. There are no community I'd rather represent.
Thank you for your comments. And that will conclude our public participation section. And now we will move to the information discussion item, handover research results. Superintendent Caius, please take it away.
Madam President, we'll need a short break to set up. We have some virtual participation and IT needs time to bring them in on the monitors.
My apologies. Let's take a five-minute break. We will return then. Thank you.
Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. Please enter a conference ID followed by town.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation.
You are now joining the meeting.
And the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing.
Yeah, I can.
I learned that I need to be confident. Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident?
Yeah.
You learn to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability. We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody, because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different types of sports, like volleyball. And we played this one game is called that. We were these, you know, these like youth sports and stuff like that. Like we would have the ball is stopped and we'd throw it to our teammate. Now we just like legit play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just every day is just they have that positivity that can spread everywhere. Like it's contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow. And they truly do become like a team. And they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions is really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy. But then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing. It can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything Unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners...
We love everything Unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners.
Can the Hanover team that's online, can you hear me?
Giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, let's, let's play these events.
Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
At first, I was coming into it not knowing what to expect. And I feel like that's most cases for like things that I haven't tried before.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
I've grown so much with it, I've learned a lot. And it's something that I want to do more with. Like I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces and know that what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, this program is making a difference.
I have a partner too. Like for sure, they get really excited to learn about our switch job and how to equip their skills. And encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really enjoy.
Join it, because it's something where you're going to not only learn how to play a sport, but you're going to learn social skills with different people, knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just going to be us, it's going to be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're going to have that type of connection with special education and just gen ed kids.
I don't know, I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer. And I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes.
Testing one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
With all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully, our program just continues to grow.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing when you could have a school that offers you everything? Does your school have a cafeteria like this? Or a performing arts center like this? Or a football field like this? Test, 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 test. Or an innovation center like this? Forward, march! Or a path to the military like this? Or a career and technical education program like this? Or will their digital media program take you here? Or here? Or here? Or a media center like this? You can find all this and more at the Tolleson Union High School District in Roll Down.
I hereby call this meeting back to you. And now to item G1, Hanover Research Results. Superintendent Gaius.
Yes, Madam President. Members of the board, I'd like to bring up first Dr. Rosalva Laguna Squatley to introduce our guests here to present our Hanover results.
Yes, good evening, President Sun, Vice President Chapman, board members, Superintendent Gaius. Today, we have our Hanover team. And they will be presenting on a final report on justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have Leslie and Jenny here. I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. And hello, governing board. Thank you so much for inviting Hanover Research to present and share more about our partnership with Tolleson Union High School District. Hanover is a research and analytics firm, and we work closely with district leadership to evaluate best practices and conduct innovative research which supports the district and their commitment to justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, or JEDI as we know it. An approach that goes beyond representation and inclusivity to address systemic injustices, promote healing and reconciliation, and enact social change. The Hanover team is comprised of myself, Jenny Filpo as the relationship director, ensuring the success of our partnership while also managing the resources that are available to the district. Leslie Duss serves as your content director, managing all the research and project timelines. And will be talking through the research conducted at a high level momentarily. We also have several of our methodology leaders joining us virtually for a more in-depth discussion and Q and A at the end of our presentation. As for our agenda this evening, we'd like to give you a brief overview and a brief overview of what we'll be reviewing together in the collected data. And then we'll turn our attention to more detailed explanation of the district's specific data outcomes thus far. So without further ado, Leslie will take over.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Caius, and all of you who are here tonight or online. My name is Leslie Duss. Jenny, introduce me, I'm a content director at Hanover. And it is a privilege to be here to present this capstone report of research that we even conducted in close collaboration with Tolleson leaders and staff over the past year. Tonight, I will step through each project at a high level, sharing the key findings and Hanover recommendations based on our analysis. We will then open up the conversation to hear your thoughts. My Hanover colleagues are here to answer your questions, and we will see them on the screen at that time. So I ask that you hold your questions until then. Tolleson came to Hanover with a specific set of priorities. Together, we decided to pursue a mixed-method series of research projects to complete by the end of the year to present at this meeting. This timeline, if, oh, I'm in charge of that. Here you can see the timeline of projects. And the Hanover model is such that we have each, one project follows another. So that's why we have sort of chronologically each one of these projects. At the same time, with the idea of having our quantitative analysis ready to go by March, we started early on collecting data, working with teams at Tolleson to ensure that we could have all of the collection of data ready to go and reviewed, and so that we could proceed forth to be ready to present that here as well. So, excuse me. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge members of the Tolleson team who offer their generous time, effort, and expertise to our work. So here are some names that you may recognize. Alejandra, Anna, Antonio, Joseph, Juan, Lupita, Rosalva, Stacy, Wendy, and many others working behind the scenes. Lupita, I'd also like to thank the principals and others for promoting the research, such as the survey, which you'll hear about soon, the focus groups, all of the staff and the students and the families who share their views and experiences in the research that, that we helped produce for Tolleson Union. So if you're here, thank you so much. All right, so I'm going to step through these projects now. The first one is a Best Practices in Ethnic Studies Programs Report. This was inspired by Tolleson's exploration of adding an ethnic studies course in its academic planning guide. So to help guide that practice, we recommended doing some scholarly research into ethnic studies programs. And this would be a long-form report. It's, these are typically about 25 or 35 pages long. And they draw on scholarly literature that is recent, that includes key components of an ethnic studies program's best practices for implementing the program. The report has spotlights of different districts who have incorporated ethnic studies programs at different levels. And there are quite a few in California, for example. So what I want to call out, as we go through these, the key findings from this, this report, is that you're going to start to see here echoes of some of the same themes and some of the same recommendations across the entire series of work, because it all kind of is guided by the theme of JEDI. And that was not deliberate. We didn't, you know, try to make the recommendations as such. They emerged naturally out of the research. So here we can see that the four key findings are that ethnic studies courses often address learning standards in ELA and social studies in addition to standards directly related to ethnic studies. The second is that a K-12 ethnic studies curriculum should address the diversity of perspectives and experiences within and across marginalized groups in addition to addressing common experiences. Not one or the other, both and all. Schools can deliver ethnic studies in many different ways. There can be standalone courses. There are integrated ethnic study standards into core courses. There are often thematic or comparative courses. And then the last thing is that it's very important to deliberately recruit teachers to teach ethnic studies, and that can be a challenge. Currently, there is a teacher shortage. And because there are not very many existing ethnic studies programs in K-12 education, it makes it hard to find teachers who are appropriate to teach this particular course. I know that there is a committee or a task force, as it were, in the district who are gathering further research through, I believe, some benchmarking interviews with other districts and really working on being very thoughtful about how to approach this, this proposed program of study. So the recommendations that came out of the best practices report are to engage community constituents in the process of developing ethnic studies curriculum, to align the learning outcomes and take a balanced approach, and be always in consideration of relevant state legislation. The other recommendation is to pilot the courses before implementation and to do that supported by program evaluation research. What that means is that there may be some sort of surveys pre and post. There could be, you know, just really looking closely at the fidelity of implementation and making adjustments for continuous improvement. And then recruiting and training teachers to teach the ethnic studies curriculum. So when we presented these recommendations to Tolleson Union, there was a sense of, this is, this is good, because these are actually the things that they had already been starting to do. So it's always great when the research is affirming in that way. So the next project that I will discuss is the JEDI survey. So the survey started in November, and then it went through the holiday and into a little bit into January. We had eight, we, Tolleson Union had 829 respondents. And I'll say that in this particular survey, due to the Arizona legislation, the, all of the questions were reviewed by legal, shared out, so that we would have parent opt-in. So every student who took the survey had a parent opt them in. So that was very, that's important to note. So nonetheless, we had 39% students, 28% parent, 33 staff members, so a very, very nice balance of the roles in providing their perceptions of, of the survey questions. So some of the questions that are typically asked in a survey like this are about supporting people with different backgrounds, asking students if they like school, do they feel welcome? Do they feel valued as a person? Are they encouraged to take challenging classes? So in the area of school climate, the majority of respondents believe that the district supports individuals from diverse backgrounds, although this does vary somewhat by group. And the sentiment is that the district supports people from different races, ethnicities, and skin colors. There is less agreement that the district supports people with diverse gender identities or expressions, or sexual orientations. So those percentages, as you can see on the slide here, are slightly lower than the others. Overall, and specific to that particular issue. In terms of the learning environment, the perception was that the learning environment is positive for many respondents with diverse backgrounds. However, there are feelings regarding validation and social support that are lower, which is an area of growth, and that is particularly true among the students. So over two-thirds of parents, staff, and students agree that the district schools provide a positive learning environment for students from diverse backgrounds. About 61%, exactly, of students feel recognized for their achievements. And 60% feel that they belong in their school. So in that sense, there's a room for growth in that particular area. And then in hiring and retention, I keep hearing tonight about the great retention at Tolleson Union. It may be surprising here that perceptions through this survey of those who responded, 75% of respondents agree that the school hires diverse teachers. Less, 66% agree that their school retains diverse teachers. More key findings from the survey. In terms of the instruction, there's a perception that the lessons and materials do include various perspectives, but there's a lack of relatability. So 69% of respondents agree that the lesson materials include diverse perspectives, but only half of students feel the materials are related, meaning they don't see themselves in the curriculum. Student relationships are in between adult and student are respectful, although the feelings of understanding are lower. And the students also report lower scores for student-student relationships. So over three-fourths of parents, staff, and students combined agree that the adults at their school care and respect their students. The students, on the other hand, agree, only 63% agree that staff understand their experiences, and 62 agree that they are respected by other students. Our recommendations from the survey, there were three. Again, we hear that there is a need to improve in retention strategies for diverse staff. So this sort of ties back a little bit to the, the ethnic studies. So this idea of having diverse staff and keeping diverse staff, there's certainly some relationship there. The other, the second one is to amplify student voice and leadership in these initiatives. This would be, this is tied to the student-to-student interactions in terms of respect and care for peers from diverse backgrounds. Those are, proceed to be less positive. So bringing out student voice, hearing more about what they need, and giving them a chance to, to take leadership roles is a recommendation out of the survey. And then third is the relatability in the curriculum materials. So there's a gap in how relatable and reflective books are and lesson materials are. This was the lowest score in terms of finding lesson materials relatable. All right, our next project were the focus groups. And two of our qualitative researchers from Hanover came here in person, one of whom speaks Spanish, and so she was able to have some Spanish-speaking interactions in the focus groups. They had dynamic- They had dynamic and interesting conversations over the two days that they were here on site. We had six focus groups. So it was a really amazing effort by the Taliesin staff to help to, you know, encourage participation and to coordinate with the researchers and to make these a success. Sometimes it looks like these numbers, how, you know, what sort of data can come out of a conversation with four people or eight people? And it really is not about the count. It's really about the engaged conversation and seeing the themes emerge and then reaching a saturation point in what is coming out of the, out of the research. And so this was extremely successful in terms of the topics and the insights coming through. And also, we had parental consent for students participating in these groups as well. So the overarching priorities that were identified of across the groups included the need for improved communication strategies. So the participants desired enhanced communication from the district, particularly regarding changes in policies, programs, and funding. This came through from students, staff, and parents alike. There's a quote here, "I think it would be really helpful if we could get more information about what Jedi initiatives are being implemented. Sometimes it feels like we don't know what's going on or what the district's priorities are." Related to that was a call for training and support for Jedi initiatives. So training on inclusivity and equity for staff members. If this is a priority for the district, then filter down what it means, how to live this, these values in every role, including non-teaching roles, so that there's a uniform understanding and application of these principles that matter so much. So other key findings from the focus groups were a need to enhance cultural inclusivity. There's a desire for more inclusive and culturally, culturally reflective educational content and events. There are many that happen in Taliesin Union. We've heard of, of many talking to superintendent on calls. And there is a call for even more. So helping there to be a more respectful school environment means having activities to educate the, the community about different cultures. This would be in another, a parent commented that this would be a better use of district facilities for community events to enhance engagement, ensuring affordability of events, and improving communication about the events and the Jedi initiatives. So related to that are ensuring that there is equitable distribution of resources and opportunities. So there should be some sort of examination and clarity at related to Jedi is this idea of equity. So making sure that the academic support, nutritional programs, mental health services, that all students have access to what they need to succeed. This includes streamlining policies that extend across the district. And again, this is all coming out of the data. A parent says that regular reviews of policies are essential to ensure they are meeting the evolving needs of our community. We need to be proactive in identifying and addressing any gaps in our Jedi practices. So again, having clear inclusive policies that can be implemented will create a more equitable environment for everyone. So very philosophical, but also practical advice. Our recommendations from the findings from the focus groups were four. One has to do with having proactive communication and awareness within the district regarding the Jedi initiatives. This could be done through multiple communication platforms and having events and that sort of thing. Build on the commitment to educational cultural inclusivity through multifaceted approach. So embed the principles into the curriculum across all the grade levels and subjects to deepen students' understanding of these values. Have comprehensive professional development and training programs to enhance the Jedi buy-in, awareness, and implementation. Clearly, there's a sense that this is important. It's more about the how. Having an efficient system for handling questions, complaints, and issues related to justice, equity, diversity, inclusion. There was a sense that there's, that this is lacking, or perhaps there's not enough communication about these channels. And there also should be counseling and external resources to support students and staff. Again, it could be an awareness issue. It's definitely a direct call for, for that, for those actions. So this next project happened chronologically, but it ties back to the survey. So when we were reviewing the survey findings, there was a curiosity understandably about how to interpret survey results without a point of comparison. Hanover does a lot of benchmarking analyses because it really does help districts, you know, see how they are related to peers, peers with, say, similar enrollment size or certain percentage of particular student populations. Or they sometimes they handpick districts that they're interested in, you know, kind of just seeing how they're doing that way. And in this case, we had a survey that Hanover had run for many years. Well, 2021 to 2023, which is called the DEIB survey, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Many of the questions were similar to the Jedi survey. So we were able to take the questions that did align and look at the top two respondents. So agree or what are the two top? Completely agree, agree, completely agree. Anyway, the top two in the scale. And compare that to the percentage from the Taliesin survey. And then we did an analysis of those results and were able to see here some comparisons. I will say that these need to be interpreted with caution, a great degree of caution because this is not a random sampling of school districts. This is, comes from 64 districts who were Hanover members, who took the survey during that period of time, not currently. All in all, it's 127,460 respondents. So it's still an interesting exercise to show, first of all, that school belonging, belonging at Taliesin Union has lower scores than that benchmarking data. 10 percentage points below the benchmark for students and parents. Staff disproportionately less likely to agree that students are proud of their school. And that at Taliesin, students, participation with students of diverse background is higher in the district compared to the benchmark data. Taliesin Union schools are more likely to engage in class activities that facilitate interactions with students from diverse backgrounds. Teacher diversity is higher compared to benchmark data. And the school, staff are less satisfied with their school's level of parental engagement than in the benchmark survey. So staff are less likely to agree that their schools communicate well with families and work with families to reduce barriers. And the percentage points are quite large here, but again, this needs to be interpreted with caution. Taliesin will be, I believe, running this, the survey again. So there'll be a way to just start with that initial baseline and have a longitudinal assessment year over year to see how Taliesin is doing in its own context for its own community. Next, okay, so this one, this is the student outcomes quantitative analysis project. And this took weeks to put together. There was a lot of data that came in from the team, through a lot of time and effort. Wendy and Anna in particular pulled a lot of this data together for this. We worked with, we have absolutely no personally identified information about the students. We have a student identifier that, that helps us with the, with the analysis. But we brought together academic data, demographic, behavioral attendance. And then over the past five years, so looking back at this historical data to see what trends exist, what discrepancies may be occurring in the, in all of these, through all these variables over time, which can be a very powerful way of assessing how the district's doing and looking at where there might be over representation, under representation of certain groups of students in these different, these different assessments and other measures. So we can see here that there are opportunity gaps. This is very common in many districts across the country, as you can imagine. The, these gaps are found in academic and behavioral outcomes as well as in program participation among students in the district. So this, a little snapshot at the bottom of the screen here is just a, a small view of a very complex. All of you have had a chance to look at this dashboard, a very complex dashboard with lots of rich data and screens to be able to do various slicing and dicing of the, of the data, particular year, particular school, and there are ways to compare schools to each other and different groups to each other. But here you can see that in this heat map example here, you can see that the darker one, so to the very left here, this is looking at the ACT, ELA and ACT math assessment and proficiency level. And you can see that the Asian population is overrepresented in, in those outcomes, meaning that they are insistently proficient compared to the other populations. You can see that the underrepresentation of the far right is students who have, who are participating in special education, receive special education services. So that's a very, you know, easy way to, to get a visual sense of those disparities. In the dashboard itself, it's, you can also like, you can put your mouse or, you know, there's a pop-up for each one of those. And then it will actually show the N-count, the number of students who are in that group. So, you know, those things have to be also read with a little degree of caution because sometimes the population can be quite small. And then, you know, you need to look more closely before making any conclusions. So some other findings that came out of the data analysis project was that proficiency on most state and local assessments is below 40% among all students, even though proficiency varies between student groups. As you can see here, there's quite a variation in these groups. However, none of them is, there's, there's one that I can see there that is 49 for Aspire ELA, but they're generally all taken together below 40%. And then for special population outcomes, the English language students, students receiving special ed services, students with a 504 plan, they are more likely to have disciplinary outcomes and to be chronically absent compared to their peers. So 21% of students with a 504 plan have had at least one disciplinary, disciplinary incident, while 15% of, 15% of students with no 504 plan have had at least one disciplinary incident. And then the suspension rate between 2022 and 2024 for both groups have declined. There's interesting dynamic there. Also seeing that with the graduation rates, graduations have remained consistent at about 86% over this period of time. We are seeing though, an issue with on-time graduation. So that's declined over the past, from 2021 to 2024, from 84% to 79%, 79%. So this is an interesting data to just have, you know, revealed through this study. Now the question is, why is this occurring? And so that takes some, you know, more study, deeper study, some reflection on the team. Recommendations from this analysis was, are to target academic and behavioral interventions in support of these groups that are lagging behind. So the English learners, the students receiving special ed services. These, they are underrepresented in academic proficiency. They're overrepresented in behavioral outcomes. So they, there's ways to do research-based best practices, creating strategies to support these groups. There are strategies through MTSS and EL services and supports. And then addressing the on-time graduation rates is also, there are possibly ways that are already occurring. So continuing on with those and building the capacity to monitor individual students, do group and whole school tiered interventions, response teams, credit recovery programs, and those sorts of things. And this is another area where we have a lot of reports at Hanover that are either available through the portal or are in the process or as we say, in the pipeline, other districts are facing, we see a lot of these trending issues. So there's always additional research coming out. And, you know, the availability to again, benchmark and do in-depth interviews with other districts to, you know, gain some ideas and, and understand how to not go it alone. So that is the study. And then now, the last two slides before we get to the questions are where we take, in the capstone report like this, we take all of the findings from all of the studies and we pull them together and synthesize them into key findings. So for this first year of Jedi research, we see a common theme is the need for increased teacher retention efforts and teacher training. So the district hires a high number of diverse staff. The respondents in these studies do indicate issues with retention. So it'd be interesting to see really is what is going on with that. They say there's a need for training to deal with cultural competency, how to handle microaggressions, effective communication strategies to ensure that staff can support and advocate for Jedi initiatives confidently and competently. And then across the qualitative studies, students and parents voice a desire for more involvement in Jedi initiatives, more cultural events, more relevant teaching materials, more communication from the district, and formal policies for uniformity of services and distribution of resources. And then supporting the special populations, who are these groups like the economically disadvantaged students, students of color, Hispanic and Black students. There's underrepresentation in positive academic outcomes. The survey data indicates that the students from low-income backgrounds with differing gender identities or diverse sexual orientations are perceived to receive less overall support within the district. And finally, the, the, these will sound familiar to you now. The first recommendation is in amplifying student voice. So looking for ways to increase student leadership opportunities and having the students have more opportunities to interact with students from different backgrounds. And finding ways to build, like to support each student and also have group and whole school tiered interventions to help with the graduation, on-time graduation rates. And then finally, conducting training workshops, having some communication about the Jedi principles and these values so that there is a sense of like a give and take. So there's like support and input coming both ways. So that wraps up the capstone report. So our panel of experts are going to be going up here momentarily from the ethers. And they are eager to exchange, to engage in a discussion about this capstone report. And I'm going to, going to, there we go. Kick off the discussion with two questions for all of you and others in the room. And what thoughts did you have during this presentation? And what next steps might you recommend? I thank you for your attention thus far. Can you hear us? Hanover folks?
Can you hear us lovely?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? There's, there they are. Okay, wonderful. Hello, so I will introduce my colleagues. Um, here we have the Director of Quantitative Research, Fan. Kenya is our Director of Qualitative Research. So she is an expert in the area of the focus groups that we conducted. And Dr. Matt Ragone is our Director of K-12 Research. So he is a generalist, all-over expert in all areas of research. So, um, Jedi and I are also here to engage in the conversation, so.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, it's, it was very thorough. Um, before we move on, members, any questions, comments? Member Dalblasio?
Thank you. Um, before I answer your question, I know you asked two questions of the group for us to think about and deliver. Um, I'd be curious to know if you have the disaggregated data from the subgroups. I know you said that it varies per group, some of the survey responses that we received initially. Love to see that, and then also would love to see perhaps the grade levels attached to some of these, the student outcome piece, to really figure out, you know, where, where they lie. Um, right off the back, my initial thought is, we obviously need hyper-targeted, measurable goals around these student outcomes, right? Um, and from there, we need to ensure that we're monitoring our, our progress, right, to ensure that they're actually going up. Um, obviously, my initial thought is, is frustration and, you know, obviously sadness that there are students who might not feel like, might not have the support or might not feel welcome as, as we think they are. Um, but it's a reality that we have to face, and a lot of this, I believe, is in our control, and we understand there's outside forces that contribute to that. But we're responsible here for ensuring that all students are welcome so that way they can sell in the classroom. Um, it's our responsibility to ensure our teachers have the training, the resources, right, to be able to deliver that cultural competency that'll help our kids excel. So those are my initial thoughts, but I'm glad that the light here has been showing, shining on some of these opportunities and challenges so that we can put together a strategic plan of attack on how to move forward. I understand that we've, we did a great strategic planning session this last year. We do have some smart goals, but I think they need to be more targeted around some of these outcomes, literacy, math, et cetera, but by grade level. We need to continually monitor the progress quarterly. You know, we can't just end it a year. We have to ensure that the supports are there. Anywho, those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Member Dalblasio. Any other members like to make comments, answer questions?
I have a question, please, by me.
Okay, Member, uh, Luna Nahara?
I'm, I'm looking at your, um, the methodology that was used, and I appreciate the, the mixed methodology, right, where you use surveys, but you also use focus groups. So based on your experience or Hanover's experience working with districts similar to size, um, and I know controlling for what the legislature dictates on what, who can be surveyed and what can be put in a survey, would you say that the participant numbers are about what you would expect? Or do they seem low to you, considering that we have fourteen thousand students in our district?
Yes, um, I can answer that, and then I would appreciate if my team would like to also chime in. Um, so a lot of times with, when we monitor the survey responses that are coming in, we don't just look at that high number. I mean, we, there is a sort of a rule of thumb that, you know, over three hundred is something that will give, you know, a good, like, a valid set of data. Um, but we, we tend to, we keep a close eye on the groups that the district wants to segment. So if there are certain roles, we try to make sure that there's over twenty in each role, and that way we can aggregate and have, you know, reliable, uh, responses. And so because there was such a nice, sort of, pretty even spread, um, between the, the parents, staff, and students, and that was one of the main concerns, we felt like it was a valid survey for the Taliesin District itself. Obviously, you know, and so those, so those responses can be thought to be credible. Obviously, a higher response rate would even be better. You know, it would be nice to hear the voices of even more, um, of the population here. So, and we did monitor across the different schools, which I would need to go back to see if there were any schools who were particularly low and concerning, and in, in that case, we usually either try to get them to, you know, I know the principals did a phenomenal job, you know, reaching out and saying, please, please, everyone, please take this survey so that we can have a balanced representation.
Okay, and so just follow up. So based on, on the participants and the respondents, Hanover feels that you do have, like, valid responses?
Absolutely. Um, and the focus groups also, which you mentioned, help with getting a little, a deeper dive into, you know, the lived experiences of the, of these groups as well to sort of bring those two sets of data together. Um, what we would also recommend are in-depth interviews. So even getting another set of, of information through a nice, you know, rich conversation, one-on-one conversation on the same themes. So like, add another dimension to it even.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Um, anybody on the, on the call would like to add something to that? I can't. Hold on, Matt, wait a sec.
In the meantime-
In the meantime-
Any other members-
Any other, 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 any other-
Now we've done that before, so-
That we've done, that we've done, that we've done, that we've done, that we've done-
We'll put them on the phone.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Okay, you're on the microphone. Speak up a little bit.
Put you on speaker.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll hold it at the bottom.
So I was just gonna, kind of corroborate what, uh, Leslie was saying about, uh, the survey numbers. Of course, we want to see it a little bit higher, but really, anytime you have, uh, a survey like this, we're looking for trends. So in answer to that question, you really, is it valid, is it reliable?
Uh, so for the sake of time, um, we're going to move on, um, to, uh, uh, address the questions to our presenter, and, uh, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda.
That sounds fine.
My, my answer to your question is very similar to Member Dalblasio. It's, it's very disheartening that this trend of performance of various, you know, categories based on ethnicity, their status as IEPs or 504, um, you know, special ed, is very similar to the national trend as well. And, you know, just because, you know, that's not gonna be good enough for us. We do want to move that needle, uh, you know, to be more, you know, across the board of the support system. Even though if the metrics still may come out the same, it's not gonna deter us from finding a way and getting a solution and coming, uh, to you guys for the insight and then see what we can bring back to the table and to address these concerns. When you, um, made the questionnaires to the families and, uh, the participation, you know, from the parents and the family, uh, is there any way it can be more tailored to specifically, uh, target the differentiation of the various categories of ethnicity and status and, you know, special needs? And what I mean by that is, you know, there's a, there's also a bias, uh, you know, with, with education in various groups and categories, as you know. Uh, can that be captured? And the reason why I'm asking is, in order for us to make any changes, we have to identify the, uh, blockage, and that's usually the mindset. And if they don't have it at home, how can we artificially or holistically or whole, you know, being, uh, to be compensated, you know, at the district? You know, where, where we can step in and to, you know, to level it up and to bridge that a little bit closer? We're not looking for, you know, the sky's the limit. Of course, that would be nice. We want to be realistic. Every child, every improvement matters. And for me, being a fellow board member, we're looking for student outcome across the board. So if we're looking at these categories that are, you know, under, those would be the first we want to look at, specifically what is missing. And what is missing? How many missing? And then categor- categorize them, the severity of the missing parts that makes the biggest or the least impact. Because we need to know where we're going to invest, where we can make that impact that we can compensate. Those are the things I'm looking for so we can make a difference. Because ultimately, we answer to these students because it's their family that is paying every one of our salaries. And, and we're looking for that information. And how I'm feeling, you know, seeing this result, you know, is a double-edged sword. Um, it's, you know, it's heartbreaking to see the result. I'm not surprised. We've seen these kind of results over and over again in other, you know, uh, you know, spectrum of studies and evaluations and surveys. But we never really got to the point where we can identify the void, the lack, and the severity of those, and to how we could quantitatively compensate that at the district level, as well as holistically, um, with the, you know, adult, you know, mindset, you know, the changing of the adult mindset, whatever that culture is, you know, look like. So there's quite a few, you know, areas. So for the sake of timing, I'll just stop talking, but, um, but the positive of it is that I do see a light at the end of the tunnel through this path, and we're gonna see something a little bit more fine-tuned, hopefully, that we can be able to use as a measurement and to see our district, you know, staffs and team where they feel like it will be the maximum, you know, output. And with that said, do you have any more comments and questions for the board? Yeah, Member Chapman?
Yeah, uh, again, I'd share, uh, similar sentiments, uh, you know, on the data, but, uh, I guess just to kind of keep it short, I, I think we definitely have a lot to celebrate as a, as a district and community, and certainly a lot to, to work on, uh, as we always will. Um, but I, I think for me that, um, I would like to see here, and I know we have our retreat coming up, maybe some of it can be touched on there, uh, and certainly, hopefully, um, really early into the school year. Um, you know, we have our data guru and our, uh, amazing curriculum folks in the department, uh, OLS department. Uh, but I, I, I would like to make sure that we, we have a focus with our, our site admin teams and the teachers to identify what our, what, how our students are struggling, and what we can do at the site level, and what support we need from the cabinet and the board, uh, whether it's programs, uh, dollar investments. Um, I know often we will buy something for the whole district. Uh, utilization might be down, so we cut it, but it might be working for a handful of classrooms or a handful of students that really need that thing. So I think sometimes, rather than like buying something for everybody, we buy things targeted, uh, that are gonna support those students, support those teachers, working with those students. So I think we'd be a little more open-minded about, uh, not just a one-size-fits-all when it comes to purchasing things, utilizing, uh, curriculum or, uh, equipment. Um, so definitely a lot of work, uh, for our teams over the, the summer, but I, I'm confident that we have the right, uh, folks in place to do it. But, uh, thank you for, um, speaking to our students and our staff and our, our parents about, uh, this and getting us the data.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to the IMG two, Credit Recovery Fiscal Year, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Superintendent Gaias, please take it away.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. We have Dr. Rosalva Laguna Squatley up here to present on our credit recovery program.
Yes, good evening, Presidents and Vice President Chapman, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Gaias. Today, I'm going to provide an update on our credit recovery program. But before I update that, I just wanted to just share some, an updated, um, information on the Hanover presentation. Can we go back to the Hanover presentation, please? Just a piece of data. On the graduation rates, um, we have our amazing Wendy Davy here that she was able to go into the AD portal to look at those graduation cohort percentage. So I just want to clarify, and, um, I just met with Hanover. They're also going to update the PowerPoint. Um, so for the four years, it's actually not seventy-nine percent, but it's eighty-seven point eight-two. So it's actually an increase rather than a decline. So they'll be able to provide that, and, um, just wanted to share that information with all of you.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, so the agenda is, I'm gonna share a timeline, what is credit recovery, then I'm gonna share our current recovery, um, model that we have, the need for the change, and then the credit recovery model for the, our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'll share support and opportunities and commitments and next steps. So last year, we began having this conversation about our credit recovery programs, looking at it, um, into depth. Um, Superintendent Gaias was able to observe some of the credit recovery programs that we have, and he saw opportunities to increase student engagement. So then that's why we began talking about it with the school and district leadership to look at what are some of the changes that we can make to improve and increase student engagement. We were able to view some of the, um, other districts that they had, different programs. We also were looking at some research for best practices for our credit recovery programs. And we're excited to share that we've made some changes to increase, um, student outcomes. So I wanted to start off to define what is credit recovery. Credit recovery enables students to regain, regain credit for courses they did not pass or finish, offering support to help them to stay on track for graduation. So our current, um, credit recovery program, we have a teacher at each site that teaches our credit recovery class. So they have a total of five classes per day, and one period is set for prep. The students log on to Edgenuity and they complete their coursework independently. Um, teacher support may include opening tests, grading submitted work, checking in with students, and monitoring pacing. So that is just, um, a visual that at every site, there's a credit recovery teacher. So a credit recovery teacher is teaching five periods, and they have a prep there. And those credit recovery teachers, they are certified- credit recovery teachers, they are certified in various um, content. So the need for change was that perhaps a credit recovery teacher um, was not certified in math, but they have students taking math and they were unable to support them in that ways. And that was one of the things that we wanted to change and we also wanted to increase student um, engagement as well. So the new credit recovery model for this new coming um, school year is we will have an ELA credit recovery teacher, math, social studies and science teacher. They'll have a dedicated period to um, teach the credit recovery um, courses. We also have the media specialist who will be supporting our students that have been assigned to them. So for example, let's say period one, we'll have a math credit recovery teacher, an ELA credit recovery teacher, science and social studies credit recovery teacher. So that could be the first period. So that's the first band. So students that need to take that math credit recovery class, they would be with the math credit recovery teacher. Or vice versa, if a uh, student needs to take an ELA credit recovery class, they will be placed with the ELA teacher. And that's um, they'll be able to support our students because they are certified in that content. We also have the media center um, that we have students that are taking elective. So if they don't fall within those um, subject areas, they can be assigned to the media center specialist. Our media center specialists are also certified. As well as um, so right now, our schools are looking at the schedule, looking at the students' needs. So they might have two bands. So right now, they might have first period or any period that they choose to have that band of math, ELA, science and social studies. But if they have an increase of students that need to take credit recovery, they might have another band which they might have it, let's say for a fifth hour, and they would have that continuous of the math, ELA, science and social studies. So with new changes, we understand that we will need to provide support to our teachers. We'll establish clear procedures. We'll create professional learning opportunities for our teachers. This is the first time that our, our teachers are going to be teaching credit recovery. So we understand that we need to provide those um, professional learning opportunities. It's also a great opportunity to reengage and relearn uh, and provide these opportunities for our administrative team and also for our counselors so they can also understand the platform and how, how, what's the services that we can provide our students. Um, we'll be collaborating with teachers, listening to their needs. We'll monitor, implement data dialogues for continuous improvement and we'll engage with our families because we know that the partnership with our families is important to increase student So there's various opportunities that our students have to earn credit or to stay on track. We have Imagine Learning, our Edgenuity platform that we use in our credit recovery program. We have summer school opportunities where our students can attend to earn those credits. We have after school programs funded out of a 21st century grant. We have tutoring opportunities funded out of Title I and Title III. We also are excited for this new coming school year that Sierra Linda is going to pilot the freshman familia house. So um, we want to target those freshmen and we know that with research, we see that if we target our freshmen, they will have the opportunity to um, have those increased student outcomes. So we're excited about that. We also have professional learning communities and teams at every site. So now that we have credit recovery with our, there's a math teacher, um, ELA, science and social studies, they can also come together and, and um, PLT and talk about what are the best um, strategies, looking at um, student learning. We also, and with that, we will respond to intervention. So as they have their PLTs, they can create those interventions for our students. And also with our partnership with Solution Tree, we're entering our third year, which is really focusing on the interventions. So what does tier one look like? That's for all our students. What does, um, if our students don't get the skill, what do we do for tier two? And what do we get, do for tier three? So those are some of the initiatives that we're going to be focusing on for this coming school So we are committed to support our students' academic success and graduation. We'll develop a cycle of, of continuous improvement. We'll explore, explore and implement effective credit recovery strategies. We'll provide training, resources and support, and we'll continue to evaluate and refine practices. We are making some changes and we know that we will be refining some practices. We're going to be listening and having these conversations with our teachers and our site administration. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you for your presentation and it's always thorough and very informative and well presented. My apologies for missing some of it. I had to run out and find my cellphone. I left it in the restroom. Uh, with that said, members, any comments, questions?
Couple of questions.
Member Chapman?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Laguna Squatley. Uh, first question, standard question. Uh, who was involved in the development of this new model from the, from the old one?
So at the beginning, we started having a conversation with, we had a credit recovery committee formed. Um, and we were talking about what are the best practices. However, um, we shifted to that and we had the conversations with our school leadership. So our principals and um, we shared some of those um, different kinds of programs that were out there. And then um, we, we talked as the leadership team to, to, to share some of the other programs that other districts had.
So none of the, so none of the teachers um, or department chairs or anything were involved with?
They weren't involved in those conversations, but after we shared it with um, our principals, they shared it with their site people.
Okay. And then there's, so there's buy-in across the campuses then, especially for the individuals that are going to be assigned to the credit recovery classes?
Yeah, our school principals have been having conversations with the credit recovery teachers, um, notifying them that of the new change. They've always, they've also have those conversations with the teachers that are going to be teaching credit recovery classes for this new school year. Um, and we've been also talking with Edgenuity with um, to provide those professional learning opportunities for our teachers because we know that it's going to be new for them.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Uh, just to continue to ask, uh, whoever the uh, end user for something that we're going to do, they should be involved in the process, whether it's our facilities team, our nutrition service. Uh, in this case, obviously, our teachers, instructional aides are going to be a, a big part of executing this. So um, I'm certainly interested in their feedback as, as we move along with this process, any changes or supports that we need. Um, with, uh, with the way this is developed now, will students, will, will this essentially be like a retake of like, so if I, if I failed freshman or uh, Algebra I, am I retaking the whole thing or is it kind of focused on the areas where I struggled?
Um, President Sun, um, Vice President Chapman. So right now with Edg-, um, with credit recovery, we're going to continue to focus on our seniors. I know we're going to um, look at different ways so we can bring those opportunities for uh, the other students as well because we don't want to wait until senior year for them to take credit recovery classes. So these are the students that um, did, didn't pass and need to retake that course so they can uh, earn that credit. But as I mentioned, there's different opportunities, like during summer school. And um, with, with the intervention focusing this year with, you know, what do we do when students don't understand? So really, we're looking at tier two and tier three. So um, they don't have to take those credit recovery classes.
Okay. Um, you know, I appreciate that. Yeah, it, uh, obviously it would be nice to not need the, the, the CR classes, but um, yeah, I'd like to see a, a plan for future years on how we roll these out. Um, so we can say summer school and after school, but we can't always guarantee kids and families are going to be available for that. Uh, so we have to do this best we can during the school day where we, we kind of have in for communication to, to those parents and to those students, are these being auto enrolled? Is there like a conversation that uh, counselors have been having with those students already or will have with those students?
Yeah, um, the sites are the ones that are meeting, well, the counselors are, are the ones that are looking, meeting with the students and determining whether they need a credit recovery class. And if they do, then that's when their place in credit recovery. I don't know if they um, send out communication to um, the families. I don't know what it's, they've done in the past, or if it's just enrolling by meeting with the counselor and making those um, recommendations.
Okay. No, uh, that's all the questions I have. Uh, thank you again for, for putting this together. I think we're taking some steps in the, in the right direction than uh, what we were doing before, uh, to support students. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Member Luna Nahara?
Thank you. Um, thank you, uh, Dr. Rosalva Laguna Squatley for the presentation. Um, I think it is long overdue that we streamline the process. I'm curious to know um, the model, like how did, how did you guys land on the specific model um, that was picked? And then I have a follow-up question.
Yes, thank you, um, President Sun, member Dr. Luna Nahara. So we were looking at different districts. What do they have? And a lot of the districts have similar models to us. It's um, they have a credit recovery teacher and they're teaching, they're using the either Edgenuity or, or similar platform. And um, we also looked at, um, there was one district that um, had credit recovery with the media specialist all day long. So we were also looking at that uh, model. But then we were also having those discussions that when we have our students in those credit recovery classrooms, that our teachers may not be certified in that content area. They have a different um, certification. So they can't really help them and assist them in, let's say for math, a problem that they can't, they're not certified in that content area. So we were thinking about then, we really need someone that is certified in that content area to really help and support them. So with the discussion with um, the principals, we came up with, well, then we'll have a math, ELA, social studies and science, our core um, subject areas to help and support our students.
Thank you for that. Um, I, I would like to advocate um, that we include our counselors in this process, right? In the feedback piece and um, I, I guess they are the, the boots on the ground. They're the ones that have to shift around schedules and make it work when a student is determined that they must be enrolled in, in credit recovery. And then my suggestion would also be that you hopefully have some checkpoints um, a couple months down the line, either three months, six months, you know, a year down the line to see what can be improved on, you know, how things are, are working out and to integrate some of the feedback that you are getting from your department chairs, your teachers, your administrators and also um, our, our counselors and our students as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much. Once again, well done. And now we will be moving to our next uh, item. The approval of the consent agenda. Uh, it's recommended that the governing board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like to make a motion.
Member Luna Nahara?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of item I three and I four, in the interest of our fiduciary responsibility to pull these items and have a discussion about them.
Can I have a second?
Dr. Luna Nahara?
Yes.
Mr. Del Palacio?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Abstain.
And Ms. Sun?
Um, okay. Uh, so just, yeah, this would open up discussion for I three first.
Members, comments?
Uh, Mr. Hicks, is Mr. Hicks available for questions?
All right, Mr. Hicks, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. May I? President Sun?
Uh, proceed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hicks, in the past, we have um, just pulled for discussion, any conversations, um, any contracts that we award over a million dollars. And so I, if you can just give us an overview of the um, the contract number 23-18P-122 SPS Plus Architects, please.
Madam President, members of the board, uh, as included in the packet is the scope of work. So what this scope of work is entailing is at the Westview campus is to construct a new ROTC building, um, to renovate the existing ROTC building and to construct a new fieldhouse with visitors locker room and concession.
The, sorry, follow-up question?
Proceed.
The amount that we are going to be paying for this, is this standard? Are you, do you think that we're going to have any delays that may increase our costs?
Madam President, members of the board, th- this is just the architectural fee. Um, and this is their standard. If you could see also in the packet, it is per the one GPA and it falls within their categories. So this is what they do charge and the construction cost is estimate. So that, this is all pure estimated. Uh, once we get a GMP, then we lock and go back and revise the PLO back to either up or down to what the actual cost of the GMP.
Now, um, Mr. Hicks, do you know what the um, the timeframe to, sorry, for the completion of this project, potentially if everything goes and stays on the timeline?
Um, Madam President, members of the board, I don't know an exact timeline on this. This is something we've been talking about for, since I began then here. That's something I've heard of from our ROTC um, people that we've been in violation. And so this has been a priority to do. But I do not have a when, when we'll have the design. This is just the first initial. Uh, they'll start the programming and work with the staff at Westview to complete it.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do remember that we have been out of compliance for a while. And so I, I appreciate that this is coming to the board. Um, is just anything over, I think a million dollars is, is definitely worth um, us having a conversation about and opening it up. Um, you know, making sure that our constituents are aware that we're asking these, these questions. Thank you.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda. I'm sorry, I three.
Dr. Luna Nahara?
Yes.
Mr. Del Palacio?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
And Ms. Sun?
Yes. And also um, motion for the approval for item I four.
So a question on I four, if I may?
Oh, please proceed.
Um, Mr. Hicks, do you know who um, who our, our architect is going to be for this um, project, for the special education project?
Madam President, members of the board, we currently have an architect for it. It's ADM.
Okay. And then this one is also um, once the construction company starts working, do we have an estimate of when this might be up and ready for our students to?
Um, Madam President, members of board, this is the GMP. So this is the contract, not the architect's contract. So this is for them to start co- uh, construction. Um, the original hope without any permit delays was that we would have this building um, by the second semester next year. The permits have taken longer, so I believe that it's probably going to push into the second semester next year.
Follow-up question, please?
Proceed.
Mr. Hicks, um, in terms of, because of the, the timeline that you're thinking second semester, what type of disruptions should we anticipate for our students and how are we going to mitigate some of that for our ESS students? Mr. Hicks, in terms of, because of the timeline that you're thinking second semester, what type of disruptions should we anticipate for our students, and how are we going to mitigate some of that for our ESS students?
Madam President, members of the board, there's going to be disruption on that campus the entire year during the construction where the building is located. We would not move them in a time that would be more difficult or create more disruption on that. So once we get a hard deadline, it could be over spring break, or we will work with their staff and our ESS team to make sure that we do the best thing for the students.
Okay. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is there an elevator built into this project, or is it?
Single story.
Single story? Okay. Thank you.
No further questions?
Motion to approve I four?
Second. Roll call.
Dr. Luna Nahara?
Yes.
Mr. Del Palacio?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
And Ms. Sun?
Yes. To our next item on the agenda, J one, we'll have the discussion consideration.
Yes, Madam President, before we move on to J one, with your approval of the consent agenda, we have two key new staff members joining the team. I'd like to invite up Ms. Stacy Almaraz to introduce them, as they have hung out with us here all night. Which is a good indicator they still want the job, so that's a good sign.
We're not going to stand up. Come on, let's stand up. Exactly, yeah. So we should all, like, give you a standing ovation.
Next, I'd like to introduce, I'm super excited, and I cannot wait for her to come on board, the exec, or I'm sorry, the Director of Human Resources for Certified Staff, Ms. Courtney Georgia.
Hi, good evening, President Sun, Vice President Chapman, members of the board, Superintendent Gaias, and Ms. Goodman. Really looking forward to joining Tolleson and serving our students, families, and staff in this capacity. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome aboard.
Madam President, for item J one, we have our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ken Hicks, available to answer any questions, although he did present earlier today in our public hearing.
All right, I.
A motion to approve the second revision to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
So moved. And now to item J two, discussion review. I'm sorry, roll call.
Dr. Luna Nahara?
No.
Mr. Del Palacio?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
And Ms. Sun?
Yes. And now to the item J two, discussion review of the board policy, IJNDB, use of technology resources and instruction, first reading. So there will be no votes, no discussion. Superintendent Gaias?
Yes, Madam President, this was put together by our discipline committee, and again, it's for first read. We can have further discussion, and we bring back for second read. That's when we'll, we'll have the vote. This one, oh, I thought this was. My correction, that's the wrong one. This is the one that came from ASBA's policy recommendation. When I was referencing comes next board meeting.
All right, now we're on to item K.
Real quick, before we move on, I share similar concerns that were brought up, and I know we discussed a few of them. So yeah, I'd like to have the committee take another crack at just making sure that we're not over dictating, but also open, because I agree, you know, bringing in AI and stuff, but we need to make sure that we're not in policy, like mandating every little thing teachers are doing.
Would you, a member chairman, would you like to request that for the, for the agenda, or?
Yeah, just to see some revisions before the next meeting.
Okay. So we have that in turn in the minutes. And now to the executive session. Call for the executive session pursuant to statute 38-43-03a2, statute 38-431.03a3, and statute 15-843, for the purpose of reviewing consideration of the hearing officer's recommendation to expel a student in the student discipline matter, SD 2025-009, and receive legal advice from the attorney for public body regarding the same. Superintendent Gaias?
Yes, Madam President, as you have stated, it is recommended that the board call for adjourning into executive session.
So moved.
No, you said moved. Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Dr. Luna Nahara?
Yes.
Mr. Del Palacio?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
And Ms. Sun?
Yes. And we will return shortly. Thank you.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell, and now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I needed to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident?
Yeah.
You learned to be more confident?
Uh huh.
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole, because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability. We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody, because sports are fun.
We've been playing, like, different kinds of sports, like volleyball, and we played this one game is called that, we wear these, we wear these, like, uniforms and stuff like that. Like, we don't have the ball to stop, and we throw it to our teammate. Now, we just actually legit play, play badminton today. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just, every day is just, they have that positivity that can spread everywhere, like, it's contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year, and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave, and then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow, and they truly do become like a team, and they're super close, super tight, and our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions, is really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities, and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing, because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy, but then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing, it can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners, giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, let's, let's plan these events, district events.
At first, I was coming into it not knowing what to expect, and I feel like that's most cases for, like, things that you haven't tried before. But I definitely feel that I've grown so much with it, I've learned a lot, and it's something that I want to do more with, like, I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces, and know that what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, this program is making a difference.
I think the partners, too.
For sure.
They get really excited to learn about our switch stuff and all the equipment we use, and then encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really enjoy.
Join it, because it's something where you're going to not only learn how to play a sport, but you're going to learn social skills with different people, knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just going to be us, it's going to be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're going to have that type of connection with special education and just gen ed kids.
I don't know, I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer, and I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes that not just cater to Unified Sports, but then cater to all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully, our program just continues to grow.
Members, please. Please come in at the executive session, please.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing, when you could have a school that offers you everything? Does your school have a cafeteria like this? Or a performing arts center like this? Or a football field like this? Or an innovation center like this? Forward march! Or a path to the military like this? Or a career and technical education program like this? Or will their digital media program take you here? Or here? Or here? Or a media center like this? You can find all this and more at the Tolleson Union High School District. Enroll now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Pollak, and I am a math teacher at Tolleson Union High School. I'm here to talk about an important opportunity coming up, the ACT exam on October 22nd. The ACT is the key exam to determining how prepared you are for college, but also opens doors to scholarships and any other financial options. The ACT will also help you jumpstart any current plans you may have for the future, whether that's college, starting a career, or any other potential options. The ACT will also help you better prepare for your final attempt happening in March this year. But it's not just about you. Your performance also benefits our school and our entire district. When you perform well on the ACT, it shows how committed we are to academic excellence. It also leads to more opportunities and resources to all of us. So I encourage you to try your best, aim for proficiency, and show what you are capable of. Remember, if you are in need of any help, talk to a teacher or a counselor for tutoring or practice test opportunities. We all support you, and we want you to try your best on October 22nd.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently.